If we stand up slow, we're gonna be good. All right.
We are.
Call me daughter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Alrighty, so we have a pretty full agenda. Hold on, trying to show me something here, update that one. Alright, so is anybody have any conflicts with the agenda? Otherwise, we'll have the agenda be approved. Are you okay? Any additions? Alrighty. Madam Auditor, would you read the minutes from our last meeting, please?
April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Jean Hayden, Chair Presiding, Members Present, Schultz, Dozark, Hayden. You were not here.
I was right absent.
You were. I thought I'd noted that.
I was stuck in traffic in between.
We'll fix that.
Weblow and Denver.
So it is Dozark, Hayden, Mulbauer, and Rossburg. Schultz was absent. We'll rectify that situation. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the board recognized claims for public health and approved claims for all other departments. The board approved resignation of Nikki Calson, part-time Sheriff's, part-time jailer Sheriff's Office. The board approved change of wage for Amber Cook, part-time jailer Sheriff's Office. A motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Rossburg, to approve the sale of the annexed building on North Main Street. Jean Hayden to contact real estate agents. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the HMA resurfacing to farm-to-market extension in Vale on Fourth Avenue, extending from Main Street West to the city limits. For quote of sixty-one thousand, one hundred and ten dollars from inroads paving with City of Vale providing an approximate twenty-five percent match. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozark, to approve Skin Creek Channel cleanup line south of Fifth Avenue and future transfer of lots one, two, and three, block fifteen, to the City of Vale. Said lots being, excuse me, the area covering the proposed channel cleanup. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozark, to approve a notice. Sorry, a public hearing related to the vacation of the following roadway segments. All that part of two-hundred-and-seventy-third Street line north of Devote Boulevard in the west half of section twenty-four, eighty-four, thirty-nine, and all that part of unnamed roadway line east of Devote Boulevard in the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter, section five, eighty-four, thirty-eight. The date of said was set for May seventh at eight AM. Motion passed unanimously. At ten AM, as advertised, a motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Rossburg, to open the public hearing regarding the proposed budget fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Motion passed unanimously. There were no written or oral objections at ten oh seven. Motion was made by Rossburg, seconded by Mulbauer, to close the hearing. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Dozark, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve health insurance and COBRA rates and HSA contribution. Employee contribution once a month premiums for Plan fourteen, single policy, one hundred, twenty-two dollars and seventy cents. The family policy, three hundred, six dollars and seventy-four cents. The HSA premiums for Plan sixteen. Single, one eleven, seventy-nine, family, two seventy-nine, forty-seven. COBRA rates are to be set are to be the total monthly premium plus two percent administrative fees. County HSA contribution for a single plan, one thirty-two, sixteen, and family is two ninety-six, forty-two. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozark, to approve the Continental Carbonic product prod, sorry, Products Inc. Contract Termination Agreement. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rossburg, seconded by Dozark, to approve the mowing rate for county or farm cemetery, section thirty-one, Gennison Township, to one hundred dollars per mowing. Motion passed unanimously. On motion, do we second the board adjourns at eleven eighteen AM? Agendas for the next meeting are posted and available at the courthouse on Friday before three PM preceding the next meeting. We'll get that attendance thing.
Okay. Very good. Alright. Trying to get your attention. Who would like to go first today?
I'll just jump in. When she mentioned the Vale lots, I drove over to Vale on Saturday at a funeral in Fort Dodge. For the show, we're there. Just want to clarify, but where that real skinny bridges, you know, that you drive across, is it everything south of that, including the ditch? And then the, where the lots were those? Golf flags were? Did you see your golf flags? That does not include that?
I don't think so. Oh, you got it.
So, yeah, there's your skinny bridge.
Where's the skinny bridge?
Right there.
Right, okay.
It's just south of that. Actually, yeah, and actually.
So it is, because it seemed like there was a baseball diamond and stuff over here.
If you're going south of that bridge.
Is that, is that where the baseball diamond is? Or is that over here?
I thought that was down in here further.
Because we're, show me where the bridge is again.
Bridge is right there.
Okay.
It's literally like right from the bridge.
Because it didn't seem like there was that much room on this, on this side of that creek. You know, where there would be empty.
There's kind of a dike built up right here to help protect this from flooding.
Okay. So what you're saying, Jean, is where those golf flags are probably over here.
That's, that's kind of the way, because I, I thought the same thing, if there was any valuable.
Where it's nicely mowed?
Yeah.
That's on this side?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
And we just, if you can see, here's the creek, we just hug it on the east side.
Okay, King Creek. Exactly. King Creek is what it is. Okay.
And, and I will remind you, they wanted to bill us for the last fifty years, so.
Was there much mowing? Has there been much that they could mow?
It was more in there a little bit.
Right.
But they were joking, just joking.
They were joking, but.
Okay, alright.
Joking is serious. You want to push something.
Sometimes you do. Really, you know, you look at this map, Craig, where we are right on just the, probably the edge of that bank.
Just three lots?
Yep.
Yep.
Fourteen. So what do we have to do to just quick claim deed this to the City of Vale? Or what was going to be the process or procedure moving forward?
Well, we need to first get it cleaned up. It'd be nice to go down in there, straighten it out a little bit, move some of those chunks around for a weird project. And I think we can check on Paul, but there could be some Hunger Canyon possibly for that.
I was amazed how big one of those slabs were though. Where'd that come from?
There's a big chunk, there's some big chunks of concrete.
Yeah, there are some, I saw that.
Yeah.
Paul thought we could go right in there and do it all ourselves without the long stick boom and.
Okay. You know, if they're asking for fifty years of back pay for mowing, tell them to get their concrete done.
It was an even trade.
Oh, yeah. I wish we can make some rain.
But you know, you get the Hunger Canyon project to help with it, and you get it kind of cleaned up and fixed up a little bit, and it looked good all the way, because they cleaned up north of it. And then probably just a quick, quick claim deed and.
Yep.
Because we really have no interest or value holding on to it.
No.
I mean, it's not like we can build a stockpile anything there, or build a shed for regular loads.
Right. Makes you wonder if there's other properties like that throughout the county that we own and.
Oh, sure.
Guarantee it.
I'm aware that we do own it.
It'd be really curious to know how we ended up owning it, you know, but.
It's something that Seth could do a report on and look into what.
For a while, Jerry was bringing those parcels into us. Jerry used to bring in parcels to us, so I suppose I could do a search on Crawford County owned property, I would imagine.
That would be interesting.
That would.
But anomalies come up, like I remember the one out by Boue or Kyron that was so over in a road ground and somehow it got. Guy had been farming for, and finally got a land change hands. It's like, oh, you don't even own that, but you know.
I would just had that question, then I guess if I, I didn't, I didn't have anything last week. But we have talked about previously moving forward with with the pipeline and what to do as far as if there was a disaster, you know, what, kind of have something in place. And I just wanted to make the board aware, I mean, I have been kind of going through with our new search engine and looking at and reading some old minutes of old supervising readings, not the most exciting thing to do in the world, but I've been doing some of that. And just to make you aware that on January twenty-fourth, nineteen eighty-nine, Resolution eighty-nine point seven, Resolution approving the establishment of a uniform hazardous incident procedure plan for Crawford County. Whereas the use of hazardous chemicals and material has increased and presents a serious problem. And whereas both federal and state governments have approved Title III and right to know rules. And whereas these rules mandate that right to know information, operational procedure plans be developed at the local level, being resolved by the Joint Administration of Crawford County Civil Defense and Disaster Services, as per Chapter twenty-nine C Code of Iowa, that the hazardous materials incident response plan just completed shall be the Uniform Response Guide for Known Incidents in Crawford County. So there is something in place. I think I can go back and look and see what that is.
When was that?
Say that, that was January twenty-fourth, nineteen eighty-nine. And also on August twenty-second, nineteen eighty-nine, Resolution eighty-nine, thirty-nine. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Crawford County pursuant to Iowa code is vested with the authority of administering the affairs of Crawford County. Whereas it has been determined that a Crawford County-wide multi-hazard emergency operations plan has been developed in order to provide for coordinated response to a disaster or emergency in Crawford County. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Crawford County deems it advisable and in the best interest of Crawford County to approve said county-wide multi-hazard emergency operations plan. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Crawford County, the Crawford County-wide multi-hazard emergency operations plan B, and hereby is approved. So we have something in place. So what's that?
Where do we find like that plan?
Well, the way that I understand it, Terry, I guess can correct me, but that when these resolutions are passed, then they're put in a, we have a file system that you can go back and look at those and see what they are. And so that's the next thing that I'm going to do.
Sure, eighty-nine.
Properties, because exactly what you read is what.
So it doesn't have specific actions?
No, that's when you have.
The plan, if it's a hazard. Emergency plan, it might be with EMA?
I would say it'd be with EMA.
That's what I thought.
I don't know that.
Most logical place to start would be EMA.
When you'd like to make, with all the new challenges before us in the world, I'd say we'd have to update that, if it hasn't been. Because we came across.
The resolution, right?
What's that?
In the last four issues, so I mean, I don't know.
Leo Remus, Don Jensen, Don Lawler.
Read, who are the supervisors at that time?
Don, Don Jensen, John Lawler, Leroy Hanson, Virgil Anderson, and Arlene Hayden, and Leo Remus was the.
The auditor.
Auditor. Very.
Just, just for, just so you know, but back in the day, in the seventies and eighties, and I think even the nineties, that every Board of Supervisor meeting was called to order by the auditor.
That's interesting.
Yeah, that is interesting.
Yeah.
I just found that as, I always thought the president or the chair would call the meeting to order. But always in the minutes, it's meeting called to order by the auditor.
So they also, you know, they waived the requirement of the ordinance to be considered at one or two meetings prior to the final adoption, voting A.
Back then, James Mandar was the Crawford County Disaster Services Coordinator.
That is.
I don't even, I didn't.
Huh.
Well, good research there.
And we may have something on.
It's a little FYI, but yeah, I thought we could find our, I could find that.
Very interesting. Thank you for, but.
I don't know how that's evolved, but you know, we are a member of the Tri-County, have a just materials team, so.
Yeah, their hazmat team.
Hazmat team, so I, I'm sure this is probably the start of all the inception and.
Right.
How it's developed and evolved into that now.
How many years did John Lawler, sir, he had been on there quite a few years?
I have no idea.
Quite a lot. Because he was, when I started being auditor, he was still a supervisor.
I think Arlene was only a couple of. Very good.
I've been here for.
I think it was up until the two thousands.
I could even go on to Dad.
Yeah.
It was a while. So do we think that this new find of a resolution would have any bearing on what's?
Well, I think it depends on what it says, and if we want to, you know, expand, I guess, on that resolution, but have that, take that resolution into consideration and then see what it says.
Yeah, use that in anything that we would put forward again, as that's been up there. Wow, good information there. So that's it for you?
That's it.
Pick on Kyle next, as you said last week, you should have a whole lot.
I don't have a whole lot. I left all my notes in a different vehicle from the Yes Center meeting I had on the Friday, eight four, which there was nothing of, a lot of, just a talk in regards to the funding or trying to get that squared away instead of just the state, the blanket policy, trying to get it more adjusted to actual expenses incurred, because the smaller, be fair, the smaller centers don't have the expenses that the Poles and that do. I mean, you know, inflated costs of, you know, bed and the center, and then still the beds are just sitting around and stay empty. Because was allowed to talk, trying to talk to our legislators about that, so. And, you know, through the infinite wisdom of our State House, they were, we were on a big push. And it did end up getting not exactly what we wanted through the, you know, the last week of down there. But the funding didn't go quite like we wanted, but they're, they're still working through the appropriations part of it to get some of that changed. Now, we did have a call this morning, that's something new that I've never been associated with, and Larry Harry just wanted to build this triplex out by Yellow Smoke in county-owned property. And he's, and he's all for it, you know, and he's, he's not really asking for a lot. And I says, this, you know, this is a different page we've never experienced before, but he wants to hook to a sanitary sewer and not have, you know, drainage fields and septics, which Bowman's has sewer and, you know, PCS that's all hooked to city sewer already, and there's a line that goes out to the trailer park. So he just asked, is there anything the county can do to help me do that?
Is he on water, rural water already, I suppose?
I, I would believe so, yeah. Which I said, we've never had any discussion in regards to that. Because I said, you know, usually a city will provide sewer up to, you know, a certain point.
Might end up getting him scooped into Dennis, you know?
Yeah, but apparently presently it's not. It's in.
Where abouts?
That's DMU. Might annex, you know.
Yeah, that's DMU, so I said, we can talk about, I don't, I don't know where we're laying, but I said, we never had to deal with it.
Have to talk with Rory.
So is he close to his place that he has now, or where about?
It's just right up the hill, you know, where the owner Salazar built his new house.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the next, just up the hill for, just the next place up the hill, so.
Has he got something that he started building already?
There's one building there already. I think it's going to be part of his complex that he has in vision, so. I mean, as a Board of Supervisor, we do want to promote new housing.
Absolutely.
So.
Especially a triplex.
So it's on county-owned property?
Yeah, it's in the rural area. It's not in county-owned, it's in rural.
It's outside of Dennis and City Limits.
Was that part of what Dwayne Colby used to own?
He owns it, but it's not in the city limits.
It's not incorporated.
So.
But he wants to hook up the DMU, is my guess.
Right, and he wants to do it right. And he said, if it, you know, comes to it, he said, they would drastically probably change his thought process. And he said, the number was a hundred and some thousand to get hooked up, which he said, I knew it was going to be high, but I didn't. He said, I might have to maybe go from a triplex to duplex or something. It sounds like it's going to get built there regardless. It just depends on what.
So Salazar has septic?
Septics, yeah.
And then Dennis and Water?
I, rural water, yeah, somehow, yeah. So all intermingled there, so.
I wonder what we can do to help. I don't even know.
I mean, I said, told him it's kind of uncharted water. We've never.
Well, if he's wanting to hook into DMU, obviously Rory's got to be part of the company.
And he is, Rory, and he's working with Terry Crawford, who's son, Quist, and then, I mean, they're, and Kevin George is with Waste Water, so. I mean, he's had all the players in there. I think he's talked with Paul about crossing under the road. So I mean, he's not trying to skirt around or nothing. He just wants to do it right and just. So I don't know what we can do. How far is the nearest hookup? Not far. I mean, like I said, Bowman's and PCS and that all have it there, so. He said Bowman's is going to be a little difficult according to George, just because of where it's at within their complex. But, and then there's a main line that runs out to Sunset Trailer Park or whatever that's called out there now.
Oh, sure.
They're on cities, or DMU, so.
Oh.
It's not that.
What are they, what are they looking for from us then? I mean.
You don't know. I said, I don't know, because we've never, we've never been down this road. We give, you know, we've approved building permits and give them their taxes. Taxes and, you know, everybody puts something down again. Nobody's ever asked us this question.
Now, would he call up, is he going to qualify for abatement since it's a triplex? Because that's usually on residential.
I have to ask Seth about that.
Yeah, I don't know. Good point.
Maybe there's something, I know we, we may know by bail.
Is it considered commercial property then?
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking, because usually when Dwayne used to come.
So that'll be something he rents, or is he selling each sec?
I don't know if he, I don't know how I imagine he'd rent.
Knows it.
So.
It'd be a condo. He'd be building a condo unit if he's planning on selling it. So if he calls it a triplex, it seems like that's on a party hill. I don't know.
I think we are, we have to, we're homes, right?
Right.
Not commercial.
And even when they do the shelves.
Badgers over by Vale, it was some, in exchange for, we had a great part of that road in exchange for the the tax that we, you know, or something like. I mean, there's, I mean, we can do some things, I'm sure, but I just don't know what it would be at this point.
Thanks, encouraged though. Hmm, very interesting. Well, to be continued, I think.
I think we'll have to really vet the whole process though, because whatever we do, we'll set precedents, especially for commercial properties. Not that we don't want housing and we don't want to see growth, but.
Yeah, sometimes you, to see growth in housing, you have to help facilitate some of that, so some of the infrastructure. Most cities provide infrastructure, up to a certain point.
I'm going to guess there's a lot of.
I think there's a lot of players in this, so I think we need to get them all in the room to kind of see what.
They've had a lot of growth up the count.
What they're proposing.
That's why I just wondered if they had any.
Just, he just requested that we at least discuss it and think about it.
Basically, they had their CDC.
I think we'd have to hear what each one of these, what Rory.
What the estimated cost would be to.
I don't know.
I mean, if we ask somebody that's dealing with these types of things, what kind of rules they got in place.
I wonder, would it be easier for the city to just annex?
Well, that's just, I was talking to Dave, I mean, like if he feels.
Are you sure you want that to happen?
And the lady that's just making money right on what a call.
Okay.
Although I, Dave.
Get out of the box.
Jeremy Barnes, Dallas County CDC.
And he still is there?
I'll have to check, but.
Good, check. That's a good point.
We're going to, if we'd reach out to someone, like Dallas County's had a lot of rural growth, you know, in their, in their county area. So maybe they've got, maybe they've dealt with this already.
Good point, good point.
We'll just reach across.
I've got it, I'll, I'll call.
You got a contact?
State? I think so.
Okay, that'd be good, that'd be good.
Yeah, we could start it.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, very good.
Call him.
Is that it?
Yep.
I'll take just a minute to let you know that I did contact the local real estate agents, and they're working on a market analysis for us on that property. And the reason said that she would do paperwork and kind of get it all done, so they all know what's going on. And they contacted all of them, and they all think it's marketable and just kind of getting our paperwork ready and things like that, so. Kyle, you want to go next?
I can try, yeah. I had CDC last week, a big part of our conversation, still the same thing that every meeting, it's a big part of our conversation. What Kyle was talking about, just, just to make sure that you guys understand what we're saying is the county, or the, the centers are required to bill on their expenses. And, you know, Cherokees a little bit smaller than even Central Iowa, but they still don't bill what Polk does, and Polk can't. I mean, now that they're trying to open up their second half that they, that they built forever ago, they might actually be able to hold some more people. However, they, they have to pay a lot more for their people and everything. So they, their expenses are a whole lot higher. So then they suck a lot away, away a lot of the money that's set aside for juvenile detention.
CDC.
And then the other, are you talking CDC or Central Iowa?
Did I say CDC?
Yeah.
Sorry, we were talking about CDC.
That's okay, I was confused.
Central Iowa, CIJDC.
I was just waiting to see how it drew back into CDC.
Thanks for pointing that out. There's a lot of, there's a lot of acronyms floating around this morning.
I said here all the time, so I knew if I was confused, there were maybe others. No, it's okay. Thank you for the clarification.
CIJDC.
Got it.
So there's CDC in there, I just forgot the I N. Alright, so anyway, that's, that is the, I don't know, you got me off track.
I'm sorry.
So that, that, that was a big part of the conversation.
Equalization, I mean.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that they need to pay by the, they've got to figure out a more efficient way to pay, you know?
Yeah, I mean, pay everybody, all centers, just an example, fifty percent of operating costs. And then take that money out, and then what's remaining, then give it out to the centers.
That sounds like a.
I mean.
I'm sure that they've all, because I mean, even, even your center and our center sat down and discussed what would be the better way forward for the state. The state just hasn't moved on that yet.
Old county's got a lot of enviables down there.
Yeah, we know that. You can sit there at the Capitol a little bit more frequently than the rest of us. Anyway, that was, that was also a big part of our discussion this last week. They also brought up and talked about these, the rates again, and what the exigent, where we divide things up. And actually, for as much stuff as, as Central Iowa gets for overrun, because they, they got that new section and all that. You know, they'll get Polk County or Scott County kids or placed from the other ones that have their own big centers. They still get a lot of kids from other places, and then they don't send their easiest to handle. They usually send their most difficult exigent kids, so that's why they broke theirs up, you know, and in particular, the non-member counties do pay a lot more for these hard-to-handle juveniles. And so that was, that, that's why they break that down different, so that it actually is, that's actually in the end more fair to us.
Is it a higher hourly rate, or how, how are they, how do they, it's kind of curious.
Probably a higher bed, like, well, mostly are charged bed days, so.
Hundred dollar for a.
Two hundred, we're at like two hundred dollars a bed day for member counties.
Okay.
So non-member counties.
And I know I never asked this last minute, somebody is still in there. They actually break it down, because I mean, they, they require extra supervision. I mean, they break it down by the, by the equipment that's even. As you can see, that we have long meetings for that. Makes this one look short some days.
Ouch.
In any event, I'll keep looking for that. But they break it down, I mean, right down to the, the. In any event, I'll keep looking for that, but they break it down, I mean, right down to the, the extra. Restriem stuff that they might have to use, anything that's on there that's a lot of extra, that's obviously gonna cost the member counties. If they don't find a way to charge for it, so that's why, that's why they actually broke that down.
They're, are limited to how many days they can stay?
No, no, there's no limit to the days, I mean, that's all directed, you know, the, they have, really don't have any control over, that's all through the system.
Okay.
You know, through Nate and then the judicial system, so that's, that's who governs, who's there for other than, you know, counselors that uh may, you know. The, the people that evaluate them, so it's all through the system, it ain't really, they don't have limits or. You know, they, they don't get to set anything, none of the centers do, I mean, that's all determined by the courts.
Craig, I think he wants to trade for IT.
They want to what?
Just say trade for IT.
Trade for IT.
Come on over to the dark guy.
I get my time. Anyway, uh. The uh. Last week's business or the last meeting, I better keep these on, these letters are small. Um, it goes through here, we got the, the detention report, actually their revenues are way up. Central Iowa, the reason it's probably longer than like Kyle has to endure over there is because they do so many dang different things, I mean. I think you guys got your own transportation system, don't you?
Yep, yep.
But, I mean, they go well beyond, I mean, they've got uh their, their finance, where they handle finance, uh. Early childhood and workforce development, I mean, they, they make twenty, I mean, they make a ton of money off of that stuff. And uh, that helps them, I mean, they, they, they have to have a bigger task force in place to, to operate the center. And all of its activities, however, it's uh. There's a lot of overlap, you know, where, okay, the person that financed might also come help with the juvenile detention one day a week. You know, I mean, and usually it's like managing their books, you know, it's still in that, their specific expertise, but. It kind of helps to keep their cost in line and helps for, find other ways to pay for, he runs a, Tony can be. Tony can be Tony, but he's actually pretty, pretty got, got a pretty good business mind that, that figures out ways to help. Facilitate, you know. Cost. I don't mean, that doesn't necessarily mean everything's cheaper, but I think they do a good job of, they're building the, the center up and, you know, maintaining things and. So, I mean, he's a. Anyway, the uh, our, our revenue report, you know, if you guys are sure welcome to look at it, it's on here. Shows cost by county and stuff, and obviously, uh, our, our, our budget totals nineteen for the year, I remember, but uh. If you can go, if you can look at all that, I'll pass it around and if you got any questions, I'll try to answer them, uh, then this here's the, this is the expense report. And if you just kind of match them up, you can see where they're color coded.
Their reason it's red?
No, that's just so it's color coded.
Okay, alright.
That's, that's the stuff.
Now, red in finance, that's not usually.
Revenue, I mean, there's really no red, that's pink, and then there's orange, and then there's.
Okay.
There's lavender and. Brown and maroon.
Alright, alright, so pink is good.
So pink, pink, pink is good. I guess. Anyway, they color coordinate the, the revenue versus the expense. And it shows you your percentages up or down. And then their, this is their net worth, I, I get these every, every week, or every month, I'm sorry. Uh, and it goes over their. You know, all their net worth, the mortgage, their line of credit and all that stuff. Mortgage is on, they still, right, just short of six million yet on the building, five million seven hundred nine thousand. But you actually can't, that's actually paying down pretty fast, so, I mean, in, in theory, from when they actually started, I mean, when it get finished last year. So it's paying down at a good rate. Uh, their net worth, you know, it's obviously growing, so that's pretty good as far as the audit type stuff goes.
Put that, are they getting money through the state, doing a detention fund to help pay for that new building, because that's part of the. Like Scott County looking to add on and this, I forget what they said it was gonna be and. Finally becoming right out of the top, right off the top of the, the money that's set aside for that.
That's a good question, I don't know if they consider that part of their normal expense, I would guess.
You know, and that's just part of the, some of that equalization that we're, I mean, so. Woodbury County wants to build a new detention centers and it's gonna be thirty million dollars hypothetically.
They could be getting a lot more.
No, they just pull off, you know, two million a year or three million a year right out of, off the top of the. And then everybody else just has to fend for what's left.
Yeah.
Were they pulling it off the two million?
There's the money set aside in a budget, you know, whatever that is.
It used to be.
Five million dollars for juvenile detention.
Okay.
In a state item, you build a new center and that's an expense, so that comes right off the top of that, what that cost to build that new building would be. And so that leaves the other centers fighting for, you know, the crumbs, what's left. So that's why they're asking, just pay fifty percent of our, everybody's operating cost.
Yeah.
And then, or, or some equation, that's what they're looking for, just.
So we had to get a loan, and I mean, I, I, I'm trying to think, would they help with that, would we turn that, I don't know that we do turn that expense in. Of the payment of the loan as cost of operation, I don't know the answer. It's never been asked, it's a good question.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm guessing it, it probably is considered part of the operating cost.
Yeah, I mean, at, at least the loan payments as they go could be part of your operating cost.
Well, they'd pay rent at least.
So, you know, if it was paying rent or, or that, yeah, so. That could easily, could easily be part of their expense, but. I'd have to ask for sure, because I don't know how, how they, if they turn that in or not, I don't know.
Well.
I'm gonna guess yes, but that'd be a guess at this point.
Right.
I guess yes.
I mean, I don't know why you wouldn't, just like Gene said, if you, if you had to pay rent on a building, that'd be part of your operating.
Yep, yep.
And eventually that will be a, the, the maintenance and upkeep of it, obviously, hopefully it lasts a long time before you have any serious.
Money aside for capital.
But uh, yeah, so I mean, that would be part of your expense, so yeah, I mean, I don't know that this, you know, the state just pays half of what each kid costs. I mean, uh, you know, see, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
To get into that.
Brand new, I guess, everybody gets charged, every county gets charged per kid so much a day.
Yeah, that's what.
I mean, there's that income coming in.
And then we still have our membership fee.
Yep, so there's that income, so.
Remind me again where a membership fee is a year, approximately, just to ballpark it.
Is it nineteen thousand a year?
We don't pay that.
I don't think it's that.
We only pay if we have kids there.
Right.
Yeah, we only pay.
I don't think there's a membership.
Isn't there a membership fee?
No.
Because you're on the hook for if anything goes south.
Yeah, I mean, if they go belly up and they've got eighty million dollars in debt, that gets divided out behind all the members, so.
Oh, I don't like that.
That's the way it is.
Yeah.
That's the way it works.
Yeah.
You get a better deal when you have kids there as a member, but you also have skin in the game as a member.
Yeah.
And I will tell you that there are some of the guard executive board, Bob Thobes, I'm, sort of, you know, Bob, uh, you know Bob is?
Uh, yeah, I'm sure.
Webster County's guy, anyway, he's, he is very detailer and, I mean, he, he, he holds Tony's feet to the fire regular, so, I mean. We've got, there's good membership, the, on that, on that executive committee that really watches all that little stuff, they could probably answer that question for you.
I'm sure they can, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that's more of their thing, but he's an old officer from Fort Dodge PD, you know, I mean, so this is kind of his wheelhouse too, is.
Uh huh.
Taking care of these type of things, so, I mean, he's a good one to have on that committee, I guarantee you that, but uh. Anyway, that's getting back on track here, I don't wanna make mine a lot of too damn long. Uh, but then there's also the aging accounts, uh, we don't have. I guess we don't have a membership fee, ours is, I just looked at that because we don't have anything on file, we had nineteen thousand, I think that's what we've had to pay him last year. For what we have. Because it says you're to date, okay. And but we haven't had that many kids over, but we had one that was all, you know, they do the, the evaluations and different things like that for the courts and what have you. They do, they do, we do send them over there, I think Jay, or I think Nate said that's what he does, is sends them over there or that. Um, but you can see the aging report, different counties, obviously ours on there is zero. As long as they get it in, sometimes it'll ramp, run out there on some of these counties a little while, because by the time they get the bill, you know, you're, yeah. And then they have the boards vote on stuff, so some of them aging one, but like DCAT, some of them are the ones that really take the longest, the state stuff takes the longest to get paid. I'm sure that it's different up at Central Iowa, or up at the.
You might as being a DCAT's fiscal agent, certain DCAT's disclosures.
Yeah, I think they're the fiscal agent, front of them anyway. Uh, and then the non, 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 non routine monthly expenditure and.
Our DCAT is not, you, they don't use Central Iowa for disclosures, isn't it?
That's what I know.
Maybe county on their, they're worried about.
Okay, hirings, and there's. At pretty much directors, he, just the time of year he works a little more because of audits and stuff like that, Central Iowa. Uh, bed days, and then once again, here's the report on the kids that are in there and what they're in for. I just can't get over how many, fill anything that are in there, you know, and it's, it's kind of sad. And uh. Then this one here was the drug and alcohol testing, where they do testing, actually, we have a testing company, can do it at our house, so. He wants to do a new solar project, I think I brought this up before. Um, I had some questions about if it gets hit by hail, he's, well, they're, they're all impact resistant, I said, I'm sure that's what they told them once down in Texas by Houston, the guy had two. And I said, you know, did they have liquid in them? He said he didn't believe these new ones would have any liquid in them. You know, because that could get into your groundwater, I don't know what that liquid is, but I'm sure it's toxic of some type. Uh.
Don't a lot of your solar panels have uh silver in them, like silver?
A lot of, yeah, well, that could be, a lot of, that's, I was, I, I'm computers and probably these, somebody be stealing them next time. It's like a meltdown on the silver. Uh. Those were some of the things I was worried about, was storm and insurance stuff and how much, actually, he was figuring up all the costs, what it costs and. Where their payoff is, and I said, that insurance figured into that, because I said, man, every year, when you gotta figure. Percentages that are double digit increases, you know, may not, it may not be as cheap as you think in twenty five years, you know? And then they, they lose production, you know, as time goes, they, they're less effective.
Hard to have a longer term plan when you don't know the cost of insurance.
Well, there's all kinds of things you don't really know, I mean, how, how, the ones that you got, was there, they say by the time they're twenty five years of age, they're only at seventy five percent. Seventy five percent production rate, so I mean, all that stuff's gotta matter, but Tony's pretty good at figuring them kind of things out, so. He was, a couple of the questions I have were gonna get back to me, so. Uh, detention. Let's see, that was just showing, this, these here are some graphs that show the different things they do, like I was telling you, some of them, the, the green here is detention. Uh, transportation, you can see the different people that work, like there's the transportation manager, but he still works that much. And detention and then the drug testing, and you, you look at those things if you'd like, and shows you kind of their business, how they operate the business.
Does Tony do all that stuff himself or does he have someone like a secretary that helps?
Oh, he's got a staff.
Okay, I was gonna say, because, man, he's detailed.
Well, he under, there, there's nothing that I don't, I ain't picking up here, that he hasn't got, and then he understands it, the last detail, so. I mean, he's involved in the whole process. Anyway, you're sure welcome to look through all that stuff, otherwise it was kind of a typical meeting, just hashing through little things, insurance discussions to some degree. Uh, and that kind of covered it, and then here was the agenda, and then that's the message from last meeting, anyway.
You can drive over there or you do?
I zoom or drive, depends, this week because of the storm coming in and stuff like that, I better stick around home there. Just in case I'm needed, you know, so I didn't, I didn't drive over. Uh. Let's see. I didn't really have any calls of.
We'll squeeze Dave in here real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, I was really just gonna talk about actually our storms, um, so that you guys had a picture after the storm of our tower still standing.
Yep.
And a lot of people were out and about checking things out after it passed, but um.
It was crazy.
Feel, really feel for the ones that did get hit hard, but uh, all in all, I mean, nobody got injured.
No, her cemetery really took a hit, man, and hydro.
We won't, yeah, we, we talked about the next morning, we were losing cattle for Kent Lansing, and we were talking how it really, it lifted up over Manila. And then they dropped back down and dropped into two tornadoes, a split, that's why it went up the one road. Then went straight towards the cemetery and got that, and then it was also a mile over, and it was right by Kent Lansing's and.
Mal Shekinger, what was odd with them is it hit the shed or the barn.
Yep.
Which house, they got a shed behind it, and then a windmill, I mean, they had have gone within the house and moved it in the basement. We stepped in, uh, and talked to him.
Pretty devastating.
Mile west at the uh cemetery, you said the one that you two, you said the mile away.
Mile west, yeah, and our, our county's tower was right in between it.
Gene.
So it made it, I don't know if, I haven't heard from Tim.
Thank you, Ty.
Greg, if any equipment on it got damaged.
Oh, there's any equipment on it.
I don't think so either.
Oh, yeah, I don't think I get any equipment on it, so.
Took a sixty thousand bushel, they didn't crinkle.
Other than polite, that's all it's on.
Good morning. You know this is gonna cost. Yeah.
Good morning.
Morning.
How's everybody? Sorry.
No, no, no. We were just talking about the tornado and it hit with Manila and it split in two and.
Yeah, nasty uh storm and. Be fair, pretty well, I mean, there's some isolated areas where some people were hit pretty bad, but otherwise, Cropper County did pretty well, so. But uh, it would've been a lot worse when you consider what you're seeing. Oh, my goodness, yeah.
Especially like when you look at what, how many that hit and.
Yeah. Yeah, well, it's just out the defiance. They said it was really bad down there. Yeah.
The number of storm chasers that were out on the.
That's a good sign that. That it's gonna get rough.
Oh, yeah.
Bad, yeah.
They were passing each other.
They'll know ten days in advance where they're gonna be on what day.
Apparently they do, I was in Dow City, stopped at Aces, and there was two guys, one had an Avada plate, the other one had a South Dakota plate, I said, what, what are you guys doing here? They were storm chasers, really? I said, well, you got a good one.
Yeah.
So, but uh, speaking of. Oh, Pat Wuslow, he said, yeah, and I know Sean and Dr. Shane Bowden, as far as the cemetery goes, you know. Kind of whoever gets there first, I mean, we, we gotta take care of the roads first, but we'll help clean up in the road ditch there, you know, retrieve different stuff, I said. This might take us a while to get there, meaning like not yesterday, but maybe later this week if the rain stops and.
The road's cleared, it's just all piled.
Exactly, so what we need to do is get the road up, problems fixed, and then we'll come back and we're gonna clean up all the ditch debris. Now, we gotta put piles set up whenever.
Got some signs that look like they got bent.
Yeah, yeah, there's some minor stuff out there, but you're really in a small area, so uh, anyhow, pretty lucky.
Yeah.
Yeah, with all the crap that went on, I mean, the fact that Iowa didn't have any deaths and. Yeah, I feel like we're pretty damn black.
I think there was one casualty.
Was one permitted?
Was there one?
I ended up.
Only a couple days later, right?
Yep.
So we did end up with one.
And Cropper County did get declared in the disaster county list.
Right, we're on the list from the.
We are, okay.
I saw it in my emails.
Okay.
My cousin Katie asked me, she said, hey, you're not on your back. Oh, you are. I don't know who, does Greg have to implement that, a request at or?
I don't know.
I think Greg. If we could, uh, Madam Chair first, Chief Chair, Madam Chair. Go down to item eight.
Okay.
Um, I asked Brent Truckee, uh, I don't know, I think most of you know Brent, he's possibly been here before.
Yeah, territory manager for everybody, I'm Brent Truckee, I've been with Zigler about twenty five years, this is Bobby Ward, he's our customer support rep. And we appreciate you guys giving us some time this morning.
So I, I, I kind of started off, then I'm gonna turn over to these guys, but if you remember last winter, we had that nasty storm in January, uh. And we had a few issues with some machines and one of the motor graders, we had some transmission issues with. And so, machine sitting idle has, has been basically since then. I, it's still operable, but it's, it's missing several of the years forward and backwards, so it's a little bit of a challenge to operate it. You know, like trying to mow your lawn with a mower that, when it goes a certain speed, you wanna go at a certain speed. So they then came down and did an assessment and prepared an estimate to remove. So they then came down and did an assessment and prepared an estimate to remove uh and, and, and replace the transmission. And so the removal and installation was fourteen thousand five hundred and eighty one dollars. Transmission reconditioning was twenty two thousand one hundred and, or twenty two thousand two hundred. And then the average extras, okay, which this would be stuff that as you get in there, you know, uh, you know, hoses, belts, or things that's just like, well, we got it this far, this is a ten year old machine. We're not gonna put it back together and any of you guys, you know, you know, you're not gonna put it back together and not put those things on it. And so that's what that is, is seven, twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. So as I looked at this, I thought, you know, we've talked about a transmission rebuild, this is a one forty M two all wheel drive. So it's an all wheel drive machine, we've talked about doing a cat rebuild, so, you know, so the, the, the first item, the fourteen thousand five hundred and eighty one, and this last item, twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars, probably gonna be part of a rebuild, so you got twenty two thousand dollars there that's, you know, putting in basically a new transmission. Um, and so it's like, well, maybe we, maybe we do a rebuild on this one. I mean, right now, you got a machine that's probably worth about eighty thousand dollars if it was running, and if it's not, you know, maybe half of that, I don't know, you know, and, and we could possibly do the removal and the installation in the shop, and this is where we might end up at, you know, we just haven't decided what to do with this yet, uh, you know, it's just that it takes time. And we've gotta kind of find that gap where we can fit it in, just put a spot in the shop, and it might sit there for a while as we're doing that. Uh, so that's certainly an option, but I know there's some interest in doing a cat rebuild. And so they came down, they did an assessment of the machines, called it T A, a technical analysis, and so then we sat down with them, uh, meeting, you know, the foreman, Andy and Jack and I, and said, okay, here's how we'd like to see a rebuild. You know, cause there's options, there's rebuild options, certain things you do, and uh, and certain things that you, they don't do. And so we got to that point, and they said, well, we're done, we've got, we've got prices for you. And I said, well, instead of just telling me and me telling board, why don't you just come up, and we'll just share it with the board, so this may take a little while, I hope you're okay with that, but uh, but I think uh, we're at that point. So I'm gonna turn it over to these guys.
I'm gonna let Bobby go, he's gonna give you guys a quote for the uh, the rebuild, and we'll answer any questions or go through it, but.
So I'm just, I'll start off with the warranty. You have, you have a ten year, ten thousand hour warranty, and it's prorated, so it's full coverage for five years.
Pass it.
Okay, how many you got? We got two. Here on, some of them are not, we're good, we get involved. There are proration uh beetle on the back, and we got all their, I don't need glasses to read it, but.
It's uh, it's five years full, and then the next side is a prorate.
When you say full, are you talking about, you know, everything except for normal wear items, belts and hoses, so basically your hydraulic pumps, your hydraulic valves, your.
Anything we're touching.
Yeah.
We're, we're putting this warranty on, now, if there's something we left off on the rebuild, obviously that warrant, and what I mean left off, like uh, we didn't rebuild the cab, which we were doing on this, then it wouldn't be part of this warranty, but anything that we're doing as far as the rebuild falls under this warranty.
Brent, with rebuild, do you sandblast it, repaint it, or?
Yes. Yeah, that's a, that's a deal we selected in the, the profile sheet, we set an hour and four. And you could, there are different options you can do, you don't have to paint, but that adds like a, another three weeks.
It goes down to every nut, every bolt, every bushing gets knocked out, taken out, stripped down, it is to the bare frame when we start this process.
Basically, I have a new machine when you get it back.
Yep, yep, and you can do different things to the cab, you can basically get a brand new cab if you want, or just get it cleaned up and get a new seat, I think that's what we selected in our profile sheet, of getting a new seat.
All wiring harnesses stripped.
So, you know, we do the wiring harnesses, but like when we, when we talk with the guys on this, we don't put it as a blanket replace every one, we do a thorough inspection on every harness. And if they meet cap criteria, which, you know, any rub marks, any, any damage over the course of the ten years, then we replace them. But we do not just blanket replace wire harnesses, because you can, if you say we want to replace all the wiring harnesses, we're throwing away perfectly good wire harnesses that don't need replaced, so we do not blanketly replace them, that's the way we quote this out.
How many things in here? I mean, when you redo the engine and transmissions, then you'll do all hoses completely, I mean, I, I know how you guys are about hoses and stuff. If you wouldn't replace all the hoses, or something where you didn't do something, like with the big, with, when you, when, well, even still, when you do trucking, if we don't replace hoses, just say like to the bunk heater. And that hose would break, and that caused the water to basically go down, and they needs of the pump, you wouldn't cover on warranty then.
But we have on this quote, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, we did hydraulic, complete hydraulic hoses on this quote.
Yeah.
So if it fails, then it's part of that warranty.
That's what I'm gonna make sure that we got the warranty that's covering them little hidden things.
We didn't strip.
Understandable why you would, but I mean, most people don't realize that when they first do it.
Oh, you're exactly right, and we can be even more descriptive on what we do on this rebuild. But why we picked it to do it this way is, this gets you a new machine without breaking the bank. Um, if we do this every nut, every bolt, every washer, you might go buy a new machine. We're doing this to make it cost effective for the county to look at, but yet still get value on the machine and rebuild by not leaving out the big repairs. So hoses, cylinders, wears, uh, splint machines, all that, all gets done, all gets done. But keep in mind, we're reusing the frame, we're using the block, we're using the, the transmission housing, we're reusing, you know, the main components of this machine are going to get reused, and the machine's designed and engineered and built to be reused. Uh, Caterpillar doesn't build this to be a throwaway machine, they have two, three lives built into the machine.
Well, I'd say just, when you consider resale value on them anymore, that's probably necessary.
It is, and the other part of it, the Caterpillar thinks about is, um, you get a quarry or a governmental agency that's content with the machine, that's done a good job for them, the operator's happy with it, um, we rebuild it and they use it again. So I do wanna stress to the board, when we look at this option, this is a ten year option, or a ten thousand hour option, this is not run it five years and look at treatment, you will not get your money back on this investment without putting the hours and years on this machine, and the only reason I bring that up is in order for this to pay off, it's reusing it another life, that's, that's what it's designed and built to do.
So then our main comparison, I guess, is just the forty eight thousand roughly that you did to redo the transmission versus the three sixty four to refurbish the whole machine, versus what's the cost of a new machine?
So I put a quote together on a new machine, and the, the, this quote includes a brand new snow wing. Sorry.
That's all right.
Includes a brand new snow wing, and one thing that guys have been asking for is front fenders. Excuse my reach here, is front fenders, so this quote is a new machine, just like the, the board uh just got, and with a brand new snow wing bolted onto it, and brand new front fenders, no rear fenders, but I did put front, but it's roughly two thousand dollars more than the last motor grader that we got with the snow wing. It's about two thousand bucks to get the front fenders.
Do you, do you uh, do you build your own transmissions, or do you allocate them in from Eaton or?
Nope, that's Caterpillar bill.
I, I, I was always gonna ask.
Yeah, no, it's a Caterpillar, it is a Caterpillar transmission, Caterpillar engine, we don't outsource. There's some hydraulic pumps that get outsourced, but the, the main components of this machine are, are a hundred percent Caterpillar.
How old is the current machine, Paul?
It's like ten.
And is that the timeframe that we, that we expect them to last, is about ten years?
We, we were hoping to get them to about eleven or twelve, now, you know, we've kind of started, Greg, to, to expand that a little bit.
Easy math, thirty grand.
Today you drive a car more than you used to twenty years ago, so, so we're trying to get twelve thousand, maybe thirteen, you know, that twelve or thirteen thousand year range before we trade them now. Um, you know, and so, um, so yeah, it's, it's a ten year old machine that, that unfortunately had some transmission issues, and we run sixteen of them, and every once in a while, you're gonna have a, you're gonna have a problem like this, and so really, what I, what I.
Are you, the engine on the machine, you go through the complete engine?
It's everything, but yeah, I mean, it's stripped of the bare block. And every frost plug, every, everything gets redone on it.
So I know, you know, the reason, I'm sorry.
I just had a quick question, you know, with the new one, you're getting the new wing and the new fenders?
Thirty thousand.
Oh, okay, I was curious.
See, in, in the last one we ordered, we, we didn't get that with the machine, I got that later on.
Okay.
Uh, you know, talking with the guys, I mean, I've been here twenty four years, and I think we've only bought one new wing assembly in that whole time. And they're starting to get some age on them, so I said, well, now we need to probably start, kind of, as we buy a new machine, we probably need to get a new wings. You know, cause by the time you get to that, you know, I mean, some of those things are forty years old, and they're just, they're getting some age on them, the wings, and so we reused them two and three times, and so, uh, so this one does include that, and then the other, the other thing was the fenders, you know? Every operator has kind of their own preferences, but we're seeing more and more of the guys want the fenders included too, and so the best time to get those is, is when you buy the machine.
That probably keeps so particular on their, on the block, in the cab frame. So.
Otherwise you're scratching them, so everyone, they're throwing them, they had the schmuck up.
Exactly, so.
That's why I was asking earlier about the glass.
Yeah, but, you know, I know there's, a few of the board members have expressed an interest in doing a cat rebuild. And I, I thought there's no better time than when you got major powertrain issue, if you wanna do a cat rebuild, this is probably a good candidate, you know, I'm not a huge fan of the cat rebuilds, to be honest with you. Uh, but.
You know, it's a eighty thousand, roughly eighty thousand dollar savings to the taxpayers, and you're not getting a new machine, but you're getting pretty darn.
So just so I understand this, is this, you know, where it says a new serial number and all that, we're getting the middle, middle rebuild, is that?
Yep, that's the one we quoted, the middle one, plus two more X's on the harnesses and.
Two more X's?
Yeah, now.
Yep.
All right, just kind of making sure.
I, I mean, if you compare apples to apples, you take the, you take the wing off, because, you know, this machine will sell with none of that on it, okay? And if this machine were to sell, I mean, the, you know, we're at eighty thousand dollar range, maybe eighty to ninety, let's just say eighty, okay? And so you take the four seventy and take thirty off, now you have four forty, uh, you got a cat certified rebuild of what, three sixty? You know, so you, 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 you're basically, the rebuild plus the value of your machine is the cost of a new machine.
Good point.
That's why I've not been a big fan, because they're, they're so close, now, you know, now we've got this machine that's got a transmission out of it. And, you know, we could do it in-house, and we, we may do that, and, and, and try to save the, the fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars, but we're still gonna have about thirty thousand dollars to thirty five thousand dollars in just.
We harvest it up to you the way it is, with, you know, some, like the first far I drill, you, you just pull it in, then you can see which way around, I mean. Is that covered under this rebuild? I mean, would this be tore apart, I mean, would we, this three hundred and sixty two thousand cover the rebuilding of that damage already?
Oh, yeah, that's, see, that's, that's incorporated into that, that's why I said, that's why, taking one with a powertrain, I've kind of said that in the past, say, let's just wait until we have one that has a powertrain issue, and it'll be taken care of in the rebuild, if we really wanna do a rebuild.
But here, here's kind of the deal, that's already ten years old, so we put three hundred and sixty four thousand into it, and we have to keep it till it's twenty years old.
That probably won't last that long.
Now we're just, you know, having twenty year old.
That, that, that's, that's the point, that's the point, I mean, and so, but I'm not opposed to trying. I'm not opposed to trying, it's just that what we'll need to do then, from a budget standpoint, cause we didn't, we don't have any of this in our budget, I mean, the machine's gonna have to set until probably January of twenty twenty five, or whenever we can kind of get it into their, their system and say, okay, well, we can't pay for this till July first of twenty twenty five, cause we've already budgeted everything for this year. And then that, this would be one of the two then, that we would put into um the twenty twenty six budget for replacement, we buy one new one and we do a cat rebuild, is how we would do that.
So.
Or at least that's what I'm proposing, if we go that route.
The way that machine is right now, it has no va, no trade in value, no.
Well, it's marginal.
Less than eighty thousand.
If I had to put a number on to give a board an idea, I, I, I would say half, I would say forty thousand, because what, what is gonna cost the board to put into that transmission, cost the sale department? Ziegler sees it as a customer machine, not a Ziegler machine, so they're gonna, the rebuild center's gonna charge me the same as what they're gonna charge you. So we're gonna put another thirty grand in and just say, well, we're gonna make a little money on the sale, so it's roughly, I'm gonna say it's a forty thousand dollar value the way it sits right now.
Well, and going forward, I mean, if we do a rebuild, and you get another ten years, ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars on it. You see a guy saying, they're kind of married to it in a way, cause in that twenty year old frame is worth zero.
I guess how many of my operators are excited about hopping into a rebuilt machine?
And then you have, basically what I'm saying is you did, then would, to recoup again, you'd rebuild again, and essentially have a thirty year old machine, so granted, your rebuild is basically.
They have, and here's the thing, I mean, you, you know, again, I, I want this to be kind of a group decision, uh, that's why I'm here with, with these guys, because I have really two things that I look at, is that the value of the machine as it sits, plus the rebuild cost is close to the new value of a, of a, you know, uh, of a new machine. And then, you know, I've heard kind of, you know, rumblings that, you know, well, I don't want that, I don't wanna run that machine, I want a new one. You know, now the guys will run whatever they're given, don't get me wrong, I mean, if they're given a completely rebuilt machine, uh, other counties have done it, uh, they'll run the machine. Um, but, you know, imagine if it were you, would, would you prefer to get into a brand new tractor? Or a rebuilt tractor that's ten years old, I mean, you know, it's just.
You're used to it. Maybe they're used to that.
That's true, yeah, yeah.
Pros and cons, I'm sure to.
And we don't have to decide right now, I know there's probably some other agenda items, but I wanted you to see the numbers and have these guys present it, so there was not me trying to evade you guys.
I appreciate that, I mean, there's nothing better than having them right here to ask the questions. The only problem that I have this morning, I just was informed, is that Shigal doing the Fox, uh, what is it called?
Fox Creek.
Fox Creek uh presentation can only zoom in here at ten o'clock, and uh, can we just take?
You can pick mine back up, uh.
Won't that be okay?
Yeah.
Great information, and I'm really glad to have it all laid out, we can kind of study it, go back to it. Some decisions that we need to think about budgeting wise, and uh, what's best for our department, uh, awesome presentation, awesome.
Appreciate the time.
And, and just one last quick thing, Minnesota Airport has in loaders, again, available, and so we're looking at that, and I'll bring that discussion back, as how we might be able to manage to maybe do some swapping. So we're kind of working on that, those are free in loaders, so.
So, welcome to Vegas. Thank you so much.
Cause I got technical questions in fifteen minutes.
That'll be great, that'll be great, thank you, Paul, sometimes you run into these little.
This pricing, just so the board knows, is today's pricing, we're talking about January, just so everybody knows, it will change. It will change, um, the new equipment pricing can probably be a little closer to being held if we, if you moved on it, but the rebuild pricing as January, it, it will change, just to let the board know, we didn't wanna come back with another pricing and say, well, wait a minute, it went up X amount of dollars.
Thanks for warning us.
Appreciate it.
All right.
I wanna know about the technical. They're gonna get stressed.
All right. Leave the box. I, like, there it is, alrighty. Good morning, we have, uh, oh, we did, we waited too long, we'll try to get this in here, so what do you have for us today?
So, Lisa, this is Craig. And so I think when I talked to you on the phone, there were just some questions, and I just thought it would make more sense if you came to the board instead of me trying to get information from you, and then the board asked me questions that I should have asked you, but I didn't. And so I thought it would just make more sense to have you come in and, and kind of give us an overview as to what you do, maybe the work you do with Pot County that you mentioned to. as to what you do, maybe the work you do with Pot County that you mentioned to me, and how it's kind of more uh, specific, I guess, as per um, part of the county. You mentioned, I think, the uh, conservation and public health, you know, that way versus just the county as a whole.
Correct, correct. Um, if if I start to freeze up, I'm gonna go off camera. I'm not sure how strong my internet connection is. I'm off site today. Um, so, thank you for having me. Um, I founded Fox Creek almost thirteen years ago. Um, and we have grown to a team of sixteen people. The bulk of my staff do um, grant writing, both in the private and public sector. And um, Craig reached out just with some questions about our services and how we could potentially benefit the county. Uh, we've been working with uh, Potawatomi County for a number of years, um, even pre-COVID, um, in their their public health department. And um, have, we have a government grant writer on staff who focuses on prospecting and project identification, um, submittal of applications, development of content. And then the compliance and reporting that that goes along with um, public funding. So uh, we also work with conservation, the conservation department in Potawatomi County. Um, but one of the conversations that Craig and I had was how how does um, county funding work for grants? Um, so often when we're prospecting, we use a number of search engines. Um, but we're really looking to find funding that supports either specific projects or specific departments. So, for example, uh, when we research public health opportunities, uh, we're specifically looking for um, opportunities that are posted on grants.gov or the Iowa um, state grant sites that tie to initiatives that public health is is building. So whether it's vaccines or STD education or um, even, you know, even capital projects tied to um, equipment and facilities. Um, we we do like to make sure before we work with any um, any city or government entity that they're they're grant ready, because many departments um, just don't, don't really understand the impact of securing a grant and not being able to follow through with the compliance um, piece of thing. So we certainly don't wanna get uh, folks into a situation that they have to pay money back. And um, are are have a black mark on um, on their department, because that really affects funding for a very long time in, from various sources. Uh, so our process is uh, we work with the county to identify uh, what departments um, you have that could utilize grant funding. And then we work with those department heads to figure out what specifically they need funding for. Uh, often it's positions or, you know, tied to specific programming. Um, and, or it's, or special projects, or it's um, campaigns, um, educational campaigns. Um, improvements, a variety of things depending on what the the particular department um, does for the county. So we try to get a good understanding of what that looks like and then we can prospect um, through our search engines to try to find um, funding that that is available and applies. Uh, we're very specific around what uh, what opportunities we recommend pursuing. We we take a lot of pride in our um, our ROI. So our government grant writers have um, roughly an eighty five percent success rate. And that's partially because we don't go after things that um, are are super long shots, um, because we we take your investment very seriously. Uh, and writing, writing government applications takes a lot of time and capacity and we understand it takes your resources as well as ours. So we just wanna make sure that uh, we're teeing up the application in a way that um, presents it for success. So uh, we work through, we have a point of contact that's typically the department head, work through that application. Um, get it submitted, and then if the grant's awarded, the the department can contract us to help them with compliance and reporting tied to that specific grant. Um, we, we don't secure funds for the general fund for counties. Um, it's, it's not a good look for um, for the county to do that with taxpayer um, dollars coming in. So um, unless there's, usually if there's something specific, like a capital project or a specific need, you can tie it back to a program in some way or a department in some way.
So Lisa, is part of the process would be where you would interview us and see where we would have a need, or I guess how does the beginning process?
Yep, so we um, we typically identify a point of contact with the board of supervisors. Uh, we also work with Mills County, uh, fairly new client. We're having some challenges getting, getting some traction. Um, just because they've never, they've never done this before either. So um, our process is we, we have a point of contact through the board of supervisors. They um, we actually go tour and meet with each department head one on one to learn, to get to know them and learn about their, their um, department needs. Um, some of those folks might have grant writing experience and so we wanna understand the skill sets of each uh, and capacity of each of the the department um, directors. And then, then we outline the the needs list for each department. Uh, we do funnel that back to the board of supervisors, because sometimes there's a miscommunication between what the departments might want versus what the county has defined um, as as being a need. So we're, we're careful not to go chase after projects that aren't approved at a supervisor level.
Lisa, Dave Mulberry here. Do you, does it ever work, I mean, projects, capital improvement projects, for example, that have done, let's say, been completed in the last six months to a year, can you go back and write for grants or projects like, like directly? We spend roughly thirty thousand on um, those machines in the basement to keep water out of our walls. Can you, since you've already done it?
No.
Be on, when you're, when you're planning?
Yep, yep, they um, very rarely will, will a grant funded arrears. And they usually, each, each opportunity has uh, very specific um, eligibility requirements. So um, you know, sometimes we can even weave our fee into the grant, that's really rare, but um, sometimes we can do that, sometimes we can put um, an overhead percentage in there, which might cover some of the the salaries of um, more operational salaries of the people who aren't executing the program, like for public health, for example. You know, the majority of the initiatives are done by either educators or nurses. And so often we can easily put their, their salaries into a grant request. Um, but it's, it gets to be a little bit more challenging to put in director, department director salaries, but sometimes we can do it.
What's your timeframe as far as potentially coming up here and meeting with our department heads and us and?
Well, I did tell, I did tell Craig ahead of time that we currently don't have capacity to take on a new client right now. Um, we, however, um, I did meet with our government um, grant writer, which I'm, I'm not sure, somebody spoke with her, Johanna is her name. Um, I think somebody had, had reached out to her via email. Um, I did talk with her and she, she really, um, she's the managing director for our government services line. And she, she's excited about the opportunity to meet with the county. Um, so I think we're gonna maybe try to rearrange some things to give her um, some capacity to do that. So I think, um, you know, we could potentially look at something in June to, to onboard. Um, but we would need to get kind of the structure laid out. Um, you know, we're, we're learning that um, you know, we, we have to, like Craig was saying, we really have to do due diligence and interview process to make sure that the departments that need our help are are grant ready, are are ready to apply and execute um, those kinds of applications. Otherwise, it just feels like everybody's chasing their tails.
Yeah, Lisa, that was, that was me that reached out to Joanna by email.
Good, good.
And when I didn't hear back from her, that's when I called and you answered, so.
Yes, because she's buried, she's buried in applications right now. Hence the no capacity.
So do you ever do anything with uh, secondary with roads with the, through the county engineer? Is that uh?
You know, um, that is definitely the million dollar question. We get asked that all the time. Um, there's, so we don't really ever come across opportunities for roads in our research. Um, mostly, mostly, most of the opportunities are tied to public health, conservation, parks, um, um, community development in terms of um, like community engagement, lots of community centers, things like that. Uh, very rarely do we come across roads and bridges, but um, if the county had if they, if you knew of an opportunity that was out there, we could certainly complete it for you.
I have a question that somebody's asking, uh, are any of the grants privately funded or are they all taxpayer uh, federally funded?
But we do both, yep, yep, we do both. Um, you know, Potawatomi County benefits from a little bit deeper philanthropic community. Um, so, you know, the, I would say the private, the private sector funding is maybe a little bit more lucrative there. Um, but, you know, certainly if there were private, private opportunities, private foundations, sponsorships, things like that um, that we could activate in your county, you know, we could, we could look into doing that. We certainly do the applications. We um, private, private sector funding is, is probably eighty percent of the work that we do. Um, mostly because that's where all the staff land. Um, Johanna and Aaron are our, um, only two government grant writers. So uh, we, we have expertise in both, so we subscribe to search engines and um, software that that we can pull those opportunities. I would just not lean into um, a huge amount of private support unless there's a particular foundation or family that you're connected to. iOS Foundation is a, is a huge resource in Potawatomi County. Um, as are several other family foundations, so they have a little bit more unique opportunity.
Thank you.
You bet.
Can I ask? Are, are you not seeing a lot of grants out there in the neighborhood of source water protection and development?
Yep, 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 lots of DNR. Um, water preservation is huge, uh, water contamination. Um, you know, rivers and streams, a- all of that is is definitely what I would, we call them sexy topics. And so the, you know, the, anything that's tied to conservation is, is a hot topic, yep.
Then my other one would be uh, for, for development infrastructure commercially and industrially. I mean, you know, we're, we're, I I gotta assume through rural development, there's gotta be something out there, but like to, to help facilitate that, I mean.
Yeah, USDA has a lot of small business um, and and rural business development grants. Um, and they, they come out with a variety of, we just wrote, wrote one for um, three hundred thousand dollars for a small business incubator space in Walt Hill, Nebraska and got it. So there's you know, they're definitely interested in, in rural development. That, that would be just my go to automatically would be USDA, but certainly there's other opportunities out there as well.
No other questions?
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
So Lisa, the process, you said possibly in June, would that just be, I mean, you want me to connect with Joanna and and set up a time to meet with our department heads?
Probably facilitate, mostly because she, she, she probably will not be super responsive over the next month or so. Um, just based on the things she has going on. So if you and I could maybe connect and I'll, I'll get it onto her calendar. And we can um, we can come up. In the meantime, um, I know sometimes with the, the timing of supervisor meetings that um, it it takes a while to get agreements and contracts approved, so I could put something together just for you to review and and comment on. So maybe we could have that at least close to finish by the time we come up.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you so much. You bet, you bet. Have a great day, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Paul, shall we continue with your agenda? Sorry, Dad. That would be great. Let's finish you up.
Yeah, it might take a little while, so I hope things are right. Uh, you have a number of things here.
We're in lunch.
Okay. Well, actually, I've got a eleven o'clock meeting with, the, the, the committee meetings, I'm open to be done. Anyhow, uh, so we'll just start at the top of the agenda here. Uh, there were a number of permits. Uh, there's one here that's a water service line eviction signatures. I mean, there's four of them. There, there's a fluid, so uh, just some normal stuff. And then we are meeting, uh, I got a really busy day today, but uh, I don't know if I'll get a chance to meet with Steve Ford, who's the head of the MP next level. They're the ones that are putting all the fiber in. We had like a couple of miles down your neck of the woods. Got destroyed, basically. They just, they, we blade the gravel off. Uh, they put it in and the rain came and didn't get a chance to get the gravel blade back on. And so they, they're using a dozer, where they're, where they're using the dozer, it's a problem. Where they're using the vibratory plow, uh, it's not, and so.
So that's what that machine is, a vibratory plow?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I guess, I, I was out there yesterday, my dad told me about us, I went and looked at those at, at the road. It looked like where they're, where they're boring it. And then is there areas where you can't bore that you need to use that machine?
Well, so they, they just bore, they just bore into the culverts. Okay, so that's something, orange tube, there's a culvert, there's a culvert in between those two. And unfortunately, there's some roads where there's a lot of culverts.
Right, okay.
But anyhow, so.
So they use that, that plow then when they're going long distances?
Right.
That's what they use, okay.
And the one operation, there's two different subcontractors, see, that work under this company. And the one has what we've been used to seeing here, which is one of those little Vermeer, you know, plows that, that doesn't do as much damage and so. Anyhow, just to let you know, we're, we're on top of that.
So are they responsible for any?
Yeah.
Payment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're, you know, we're trying to work that out. And again, here's where we try to find that balance between, you know, they have to be good stewards of the road. But yet we have to be physically responsible to the taxpayers, the county, and everybody wants high speed internet. Or fiber.
Man, I had, I had a mailman just tell me, he said, wherever that vibrating plow, I guess, if you call it, it's gone. That they said it just, for some reason, it just ruins the road.
It's a problem. Well, I would say it ruins it, but it's.
That was his.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's these isolated, there's these isolated cases, okay? They're doing like seventy miles over there and then it's sixty miles over east and there's a lot of miles of road that they're covering. And so you know, last year we had about thirteen thousand dollars worth of damage last fall and I think they're pretty much done over on the whole east side. Now they're over here and this is really kind of the first that we've had this spring and they've been working here for over a month. So isolated areas where there's problems, okay? But they've been really good, excellent to work with, okay? We call them, there's an issue, they show up and we get it addressed. But just to let you know, we're watching it, following up on that, so, okay? Uh, the uh, construction projects, no, no new uh, information on the box core, the uh, maintenance shop. Uh, poured the floor yesterday. Um, and the guys are down there working on the salt, the salt and sand storage bin, concrete slab for the fuel tank. And uh, so I, and we, we had builder's risk insurance, but on Friday night I was a little concerned. So I called Kurt, I said, make sure this is on our policy.
Oh, yeah.
I would imagine there's a lot.
So.
Things were insured.
Yeah, so anyhow, um, that's. It's, it's coming along real good and we're, you know, we're still on that, that uh, you know, plumbing, indoor plumbing doors and stuff like that now, and electrical, but it's just moving along real well. I, I hope by the Fourth of July, we can have a fire crackling ground over there, yeah, I don't know. So that's been along real well. Great crew, they finished up on each avenue, second project for the year already. Um, and now they're on N Avenue, so moving along real well. Lots of good feedback on that project up there. Um, as well as the bridge project that the bridge crew fi- finished up on uh, uh, over by Tom Ludwig's on L Avenue. So, uh, and bridge crew now, they're down there working on that stuff down in L, and then they're gonna, we're, we're gonna move from that. They got a few miscellaneous things, we're gonna go over and put that temporary bridge in on by West Side, so this will be. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. We're gonna have to mobilize a big crane to set these temporary sections. We, we're not gonna try that on.
We don't have the lift.
No, no, the reach, yeah, so we gotta do that safely, so we're gonna, that's gonna be. Gotta be safe, don't want anybody getting hurt. So, uh, so we gotta have the rig to handle that. Um, the next item is the uh, the, that notes public hearing. My apologies for the confusion. Um, last week, um, I know we've got here a couple of times on this week's agenda. Um, last week, um, I know we've got here a couple of times on this week's agenda, but we could change this to whatever date.
They need to rescind that.
Okay, rescind the.
And then they'll take new action.
So we've got it on here. For the hearing date of May seventh. So we need a motion to rescind that. Need a second? Alright, need further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
May pose, same sign. Chair votes aye. So the motion has been rescinded. So we do not have a public hearing for May the seventh. So when do we want the uh, next uh, public hearing?
Is that fine with everybody?
Yep, just wanted to make sure.
Are you getting that in for publication or are we getting that in? We will. Okay, I just wanted to make sure it's always doesn't get missed.
So I'll give you this, a copy of that.
Yeah. Electronic copy, uh, yeah.
So then we need a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the, the uh, notice of public hearing for May twenty first, twenty twenty four. And then.
Alright. Alright, do you have a second?
I've got ten oh five on here.
Ten oh five?
Okay.
Ten oh five? I'm not sure why it says ten oh five, but.
We'll move it.
Alright, any further discussion? Now I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, chair votes aye. So we now have a public hearing for May twenty first at ten oh five A M. Alright.
We did want it probably just to get changed in here.
Oh.
Because there was probably another one. So, okay, so that's uh, that item. And, and again, these are two really kind of benign roadway vacations. The one is just a little bump out that no one ever even, there's no road there. It's just kind of behind the residents out there. They were wanting, wanting to clean it up. So.
Yep.
And then the other one is uh, on the, on the class and books up there that they'd like to get closed. So it's good. Uh, let's see, next item, next item is number five. Okay, and this is, if you recall, the uh. Gathering strength data on the roadways and we selected a hundred miles as opposed to doing all the gravel.
Right.
And so they just need an, an agreement signed that says that we're okay to do it. So I wanted to bring it to you guys to approve it. So when I sign it.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Alright.
Second.
Alright, any further discussion?
What was the cost on that? Is it?
Our out of pocket's gonna be, our out of pocket's gonna be in that four to five thousand dollar range. Yeah, yeah. Could we really? Backed it off quite a bit.
Alright, more discussion? Otherwise I'll call a vote. All in favor? Aye? Any pose, same sign. Chair votes aye. So we'll skip that sign for your call.
Okay, uh, item, uh, thank you. Item six, uh, the storm, we've kind of talked about that a little bit. Um, one of the things, and I'm just gonna leave this with you and you can pass this around, take a look at it, but. I've been saying this is gonna happen and it is, this is, this is a little, this is a little sample of what's gonna happen. In this county when we get the big rains. So covert outlets plug because there's a dike built, a little intake built. And uh, no till and no terraces and a huge amount of cornstalks make their way to the bottom of the hill. Plug the covert, roadway over tops. Everything goes where it's not supposed to go. So it's a problem. So I'm just gonna leave that. You all look at, uh, and take a look and see, uh, that's what happens. And we had a, a, a few samples of that and that was only a couple inch rain, you know? If we get a six or an eight inch rain, somebody, God save us all. Um, so uh, anyhow, and then we're gonna help clean up with the trees. Other than that, um, you know, some. Little bit of erosion, but not bad. Actually, the rain, ninety percent of the roads helped it out. It firmed them up and. It was a good thing. We needed the rain. So that's a good thing. Um, closing the road, L fifty one and Rickets, uh. So, um. They're having a parade. I think this is the same day as their centennial, Sessom Centennial. So. Uh, they wanted to know about closing L fifty one for the morning or while the parade's going on. Everybody's okay with that. I'll give them the, give them the blessings and go ahead. Yeah, we'll, we'll help. We'll, we'll provide them barricades. They just have to put them up and take them back down. So anyhow, um. So we'll do that. Uh, the motor grader rebuild, we already talked about that. Think about that.
What's the center new tires cost? New machine, I'm coming with tires. We rebuild one that has all tires on it. So fifteen thousand?
Uh, no, they're probably in that sixteen hundred dollar range right now. Sixteen to eighteen, depending on, you know, that fluctuates always.
They put new tires on a rebuild though, right?
Yeah. That I didn't even.
I didn't see it in the scope of work anywhere.
I would assume it would come with new tires.
Honestly, I'm not really in camp of a rebuild. I think you're married to the machine.
I just don't see much.
Twenty euros down the road.
You're so.
You're not sure you're gonna keep it.
You're so close to a new one, just buy a new one. If I'm spending my money personally, I'm not doing a rebuild. I'm trading the old one off and I'm buying a new machine.
If it was half the cost of the new one?
Here's what I think we should do. I'm just gonna throw it out. And once I saw the numbers on the rebuild, you know, when we were talking about it. We're gonna rebuild the tran- we'll take the transmission out ourselves. Place whatever hoses, belts, whatever we gotta do while we had it out. We'll send it up to see, up to Ziggler, they'll rebuild the transmission. We put it back in and we keep it on. You got about thirty thousand dollars.
The questions I didn't get to ask was motor stress. Alright, every time you have an engine, I mean, it. It, it stresses along its life. So the, the block itself loses life. I mean, is it, are, will them engines hold up for that twenty years? I mean, under the normal wear and tear? I don't even know what we consider normal wear and tear. You know, I mean, those are the things, cause. You, you look at, you know, when the guys got their, their pulling tractors now, obviously we aren't gonna put them under the same amount of stress. But this is an extreme example that illustrates it. Them blocks will blow apart due to the excess stress. Well. What you get is you'll get bearings in, 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 basically in the cutouts inside the block. They'll start to wobble and what in there is the, the longer the life that an engine goes. So I, I mean, we're starting to see that with some of that. Where the people do the uh, slap the old six M Z's into the brand new trucks, you know, the glider kits. And you're starting to see a little bit more of that stuff starting to happen in these old engines. So that was my questions that I wanted to ask them. How much success were they having? How much of this they done?
Well, Minota County's done one and Idaho County's done two. So if you wanna go on a road trip someday and go meet with them and talk to them, we can.
How long ago?
Um, the last five years, I guess, and cause they haven't really been doing much of this, but I couldn't tell you, Greg.
But everything works.
But uh, but anyhow, you, you know, I wanted you to all understand, cause I know there's been some discussion about which direction we should go and.
But Paul, to Ty's point, say you do this rebuilding, an engine blows two years later.
Well, they're gonna stand behind it.
We're going to ruin that ten year.
Only ten percent on ten, on year ten.
I'd rather have a new machine that's got ten thousand dollars after ten years. That you're pretty confident in. I don't know.
So, so Paul, when you, when you say that now they're going eleven, twelve years, you're trying to get out of them instead of ten?
We're trying to get like that twelve to thirteen thousand dollars in them.
So it says, this one's at the ten year. If you got a new one now, does that screw up the cycle or follow up with the?
Uh, this just gets plugged into that new slot is what happens. You know, now this, you know, again, we do kind of what I'm. Thinking we maybe should do here is to rebuild the transmission and continue on down the road. Uh, it just falls in. Pardon?
I'm, I'm leaning that way. Just do the transmission herself.
Yeah, and then it just goes into the normal cycle.
Right.
You know, it, it, it'll stick around for another year or two as a spare and it'll go out the door. So.
Here's the problem. They have no resale value. Nobody needs them. I mean, and it's, it's absolutely one of our. Must-do jobs, you know, with snow removal, maintaining these county roads is our must-do. So this is our probably most important piece of equipment inside secondary roads. Wouldn't you agree?
Right. I mean, the, the, well, I've said this many times, the two things that people are most concerned about is how well you remove the snow and. How smooth the road is in front of their house. I mean, you know, the grading, the bridges, all of that, that's.
That's what you gotta look at. I mean, this hundred thousand dollar savings, I mean. I agree. That's the part is if that was a two hundred thousand dollar savings or even a hundred and fifty, you start to entertain. Alright, there's some equity in that. Cause it's only worth forty thousand dollars to us. To trade it or get rid of it at the end. That's peanuts when you, that's, that's ten percent. It's only ten percent of its value. Well, that hundred thousand's more than ten percent. But I mean, so there's, there's things you gotta think about.
I mean, well, I think, you know, too. If you add, if you take the value of that trade off of the new machine, you're at the rebuild price. And that's what I've always looked at, is that you're at the rebuild price. And so, you know. The combination of the rebuild and the value of the used machine gets you a new price. And I don't know if people are looking at that. That's the way I'm looking at it.
In the five year, after five years of use, I mean, if you put it on full-time status, it's five years of use, then it's. Five, it's probably fifty percent chance better of some internal component, major component, engine. So having a stress problem. That's my, that's my.
I think you kind of have the sense of here.
Okay, I mean, I'd like to do it if it was gonna save us some money. I'd love to try at least one. If it's gonna save us some significant money. But I mean, we're comparing, we're comparing oranges to, to whatever they call the littler orange. I mean, it's, it's still orange and it's still round, you know, I mean, we're not really getting a very good.
It doesn't, does it make sense? I guess if our machine is currently worth forty and if you fix it, it's worth eighty. But it costs us fifty to fix it.
Yeah.
Make any sense either. Spend fifty in a machine that's.
Well, that's why I'm trying to do it in-house and not spend fifty.
Right. And still won't have new tires on it. You're big on the tires thing.
You figure it out, that number's even less than that.
Right, I understand.
Sixty thousand range, not the eighty though. You're probably closer to. Seven, six.
We were gonna do ones with that front fender anyway, don't we?
Uh, some we have and some we haven't. It depends on the, the, the operator. Some don't want them and. So I, I try to tailor it towards what the people want. But I think moving forward, we're probably gonna get most of them with them, cause most of the guys are kind of.
But the only reason I can see you don't want is for throwing chains on it.
Exactly. You gotta take them off. You gotta, you know, the chains become problematic. So.
Otherwise it keeps the slop off your windows. And like I said, that scratches them.
Okay, um, consensus is, we maybe just.
In-house. Get a couple more years out of it.
Yep, uh, dump truck tip over. I set pictures. I got more if you wanna look at them. Welcome to take a look at. Honestly, uh. Everybody's fine. And all we gotta do is replace the mirror.
Okay.
Miraculously, unbelievably. Well, the, the, the uh, the wing post. Let me just push the door back out and put a mirror on it.
See how he's feeling and stuff. But then I say, cause usually the next day is when the picture shows up and. We've had more damage with just the wing post slapping, the wing slapping the door, so.
We have, much more. So, uh, so that was good. That turned out really good. Uh, recent bridge, bridge replacement cost. I just wanna ask, I mean, this is kind of really cool. They replaced that bridge over there about, or Tom might really. Popped it off, used the concrete above it, put a new bridge in, twenty-four foot wide, legal. Did the grading, reshaped the intersection, did a bunch of, you know, spent several days there grading for sixty-seven thousand dollars.
That one on bridge, if you maintain it, it'll feel much, it don't look like the original bridge.
Yes. But I'm impressed with what they did. That's, that's some real value. And those people out there are very happy, all the people that they're good at. Kudos to the bridge crew and good job. Uh, Manella Mandis ride is on uh, Saturday, the Saturday, just an F Y I. And uh, unfortunately, no. I do like to ride bikes, but I like to stay on the roadways. It's a lot safer places to ride bikes. Uh, but we put signs up. So we put them up and we take them back down. We try to accommodate. The ride and try to make sure that everybody does it safely. But um, I just fundamentally just make the vehicles and bikes. Probably shouldn't be together. Um, but uh, yeah, cert act, cert act has been. And the methodology has been eliminated.
Which is, yes.
It's, it's, yeah. And so I've got, I've got, anybody would like to see, there's who voted for and against it. And the language that uh, was eliminated, if you wanna keep that, take a look at it. Uh, you know, it, it makes no sense at all. Presumably the D O T will leave everything the same, probably adopt the same methodology, I hope. But um, I mean, I use the analogy. It's like putting my mother-in-law in charge of my personal finances. And I love my mother-in-law. She's a great person, but number one, she has no business knowing what my personal finances are. Number two, she probably has no care, doesn't care. But now she has the power. And that's the way I see it. The D O T commission probably doesn't really want this, doesn't know what they're getting. Probably has not a lot of interest, but once they find out, but they now have control of five hundred and forty-seven million dollars. In money and how it gets sub-allocated. That's a little bit of a scary proposition in my opinion.
You're right. So it could be any pressure for them to keep the current formula as it is?
There'll be pressure to change it.
Do you know what your?
By urban influences. I can almost guarantee you there will be and it will not be good for us. It's buried in this two hundred and thirty-five page bill. That speaks to commissions, boards and committees in improving the efficiency of government. This is taken out of the hands. Of the people who are most suited to decide where that money is sub-appropriated and put it in the hands of someone who doesn't have any interest in it. That's six engineers, six supervisors spread out across the state of Iowa from small, large and medium counties. It was an eloquent, perfectly developed formula. And now it's tossed to the wind. And buried in this bill. So, I'm not happy.
Nope, it's, it's just another piece of the.
How were your other local engineers? Down here in, in any of these counties, uh, uh, you know? In our districts, how's that? How was Carroll County's engineer? How did he feel about this?
Oh, nobody supported it.
So none of the engineer?
We were told that I S A C by Lucas Beacon, the I S A C legislative liaison, uh, that we should stand down. You know?
Is there any board of supervisors? Or is there any board of supervisors here now?
I walked out of the room.
Were there any board of supervisors here now that supported that?
No.
No.
That's my point. Look at the yeses on here.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
Look at the yeses on.
Yeah. Anyhow, uh, it, it's unfortunate. Um, and it'll probably be fairly benign here initially, but. Uh, you know, I don't know how else to explain it other than now.
The potential for us rural Iowa to suffer is large.
It is. Cause one of the, one of the formulas, one of the, one of the pieces of the formula is population. And there's been attempts in the past to say, well, we need to make that a, a higher percentage of the factor. Well, naturally, you know, you, urban areas, if you change that factor from ten percent to fifteen percent of the overall formula. Seems pretty minimal, seems pretty benign. But that's my fear. Cause that's what's gonna happen.
So as far as I know, Ray's the only guy that, I, I, we got a new one from up in Cherokee. I don't know.
So is that about annually what Iowa spends on roads is five hundred and seventy-four million?
Five, five hundred and forty-seven million. If you, you know, just think of the pot of money that's collect, collectively. Okay, isn't that one point five to one point six billion dollar range? Okay? And forty-seven and a half percent goes to the state. That's by statute. Thirty-two and a half percent goes to the counties and twenty percent goes to the cities. Okay? And, and then the cities is sub-allocated based on population. Very simple formula. Okay? The state goes to the state. And then they determine whether it's going to highways, bridges, interstate system, wherever it's gonna go. But the counties have to take that money and sub-allocate it at between ninety-nine counties. And so twenty years ago, there was this very detailed effort put into creating this formula. That provided stability and certainty and fairness and equity. Okay? And now that's been cast to the wind and it's worked perfectly for twenty years without any issues. And attempts here or there to, to try to change the population, which is very easy to do. So, but anyhow, it's done.
Look, we do.
Bill's been passed, excited. And I could be presumptive and maybe I'm saying that the sky's falling, but there's no justification for doing this.
Have you had any conversations with our, our local representatives after it passed?
Never heard back. No, I haven't even talked to them. Cause I didn't hear back when I suggested it was a bad idea. Steve did call back. I guess one, one did, but uh, the other one did not. So.
Interesting.
So, um.
To the T.
Pretty close.
Three in the house.
Again, it just, it did make some sense. One question I gotta ask. This, this grand writing thing that I just said, and I listen, are we doing a good enough job? Or is there a concern?
Oh, we're just looking for other ways.
Okay.
Okay, you're doing fantastic.
Cause I know we missed out on one. And I was disappointed we missed out on.
Oh, that one, that one was self-explanatory. You can't compare.
Paul, this could be for capital improvements for like courthouse, could be for conservation.
Looking for ways to where we can reduce tax asking.
Yeah, that's our, yeah, absolutely. And, and always looking for those opportunities, so.
And if she can, if they can assist you, great. If not, we're just looking.
Okay, yeah, yep, sounds good. There you go. Sounds good.
Doing our due diligence.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Paul. All righty. Rachel, you are up. Come on up. Thank you for waiting. We've been trying to keep it all rolling here this morning.
All schedules.
Yeah.
It goes fast. You're not doing a good job.
And we know, uh, Paul did not send me a note to keep it rolling today, so.
Keep on my time, we're gonna finish.
Is that your job?
Keep it rolling. All right, so what do you got today, Rachel?
Yeah, I guess so. Um, so I wanna talk a little bit about the medical examiner investigator system in the state in this county and I have. Two parts of that today. One is a request for continued training. And the other part is, uh, maybe a systems overview and ways we can have continuous improvement. If that's not an area you're already familiar with. Um, so the short one essentially is I'd like to go to the training in Aitney in June again this year. There is a grant again. I was encouraged to apply for it even though we received it last year. I have the application completed. It requires a chair signature. Um, but like last year, I would like to request that if I don't receive the grant, the, the county will cover my costs for this course. So the course itself is four hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the three days. Um, that will cover part of the per diem because last year they gave us breakfast and lunch. So I'd have some mileage and I would keep it to two nights hotel stay because I can get up. At the crack of dawn and drive out there on the first day. Um, so that's that part.
Is this, uh, I, I'm gonna be always, I mean, did, like last year, you know, you had never done the job.
Right.
So this is like you're continuing it or?
Yes, but if your question is, am I gonna go every year? Probably not.
I just did not this, but this was, but it's continuing yet.
It's going to be a similar class, so it's both. It's advertised as for anybody who's new to this, but it's also continuing ed. And the piece of that is now that I've done this work, because I'm doing it for Ida County also, so since July, I've run eleven death investigations. Um, now I know what I don't know. And I think you guys could probably relate to this, looking back into where you started in this role and then a year later, okay, now I'm ready for these other questions. And if I can review some of the titles of the courses for last year, you'll understand that it's pretty heavy stuff. And it's maybe not a one and done. Um, on the first day, there was role of the ME and death investigator. Um, introduction to medical legal death scene investigation, so marine law and medical. Um, collaborating with law enforcement and that's probably a systems need I see for Crawford that we can talk a little bit about. Cause and manner of death is a hard, hard, hard thing to do, especially when we don't send to autopsy, then we have to decide like how and why you died. Um, so could always use training on that. Um, last year, decedent identification, so another one of our jobs is like, hey, is this who we think it is or do we know who it is? An intro to forensic anthropology, organ donation, sharp and blunt force injury. So by the end of that Monday, do you think I took a lot away from sharp and blunt force injury? Probably not. Tuesday was asphyxia fatalities, motor vehicle and pedestrian fatalities. Um, a lot on the process for investigating infant deaths because it's a lot longer and a lot different. Um, investigation of drowning and environmental deaths. And then they took us to, um, D-Max crime scene house. And they set up five or six scenarios and put us in groups and shifted us through running, like they have mannequins that are, that look dead. They ha, they set up each scene for us to investigate, so it was practicum from one fifteen to five fifteen. Then they had us back on Wednesday, um, investigation, um, impossible elder abuse. Um, deaths during law enforcement apprehension, electrical fatalities, fatal fire investigations and firearm injuries. So they haven't put out what the exact courses are this year, but I thought that might give you an overview of like. Dang, I can't become an expert on all that in one go. I also went to training in November that I had Ida County pay for. Um, Dr. Crabbe and Dustin Miller were also there with me. Um, and that was the Iowa semi like state annual meeting, so it's shorter, but like this one's twenty hours. Of training and that one was like thirteen. Um, I've done some training on my own, which has been Colorado has a free course that's like. Four hours maybe on infant death investigation, so I completed that and I've done a lot with, um, a podcast that's training, things like that, so.
Rachel, do you, when you talk to like Dr. Crabbe or Dustin and they say, hey, you go, and then they kinda want you to bring back what, share with them information or?
And that's when I say continuous improvement of systems. I think that would be an interesting piece to move forward with if I had people who, who wanted to. Is Dr. Crabbe available by phone all the time? Yes. Will he answer my questions? Yes. Um, but no, there isn't a time where like all five of us sit down and, um, go over things or make a plan or review cases. Um, no.
Well, considering you don't have to deal with all the different things all the time, but you still need to have your. Understanding of it when you do get there, that's probably good. I mean, if they do you, refreshers.
And what's interesting, like in Ida County, yes, I've done some, several like, okay, natural death. Elderly guy in bed, fine, but for Crawford, I've only done three, I've only been called three times since July. I have responded every time and I've, it's all been really bad stuff. It's been really unique, like these trainings are preparing us. I'm not sure why. Um, but that's what I've done here is the big ones that you guys have heard about and, um, that people don't wanna go look at.
So is there, to Ty's point, I guess, is there ongoing training that is required? Do you have to do so many? CEV or whatever they call it, or once you're licensed, you're just licensed whether you attend this training or not?
Right. There is not a requirement for med examiner investigator. Um, I do have to have a medical license, so yes, on the EMS side I have continuing ed, on the speech therapy side I have continuing ed. Because those are my medical licenses, but this is a county appointed role. It's not a licensure, so no. There's not except. Iowa code says within five years of taking on this job, you're supposed to get certified at the national level. Um, but people don't. So that's why I have like this log is because I'm trying to figure out how to have enough points for this national registry certification. Um, because that's not the gold standard, but maybe the silver standard for, for this work is to be. Um, certified through the American Board of Medical Legal Death Investigators. So it's something where the code says you gotta do this in five years, but if your county can't, like, we'll just say it's okay. Like the county can decide, it'll be okay, Rachel, just keep doing it. Um. It's hard to get this certification in a rural area because some of the points you have to earn are by number of calls you've run. So when we have a low call volume, it's hard to add those up. I'm in a good place because you also get points for your education, even if it's not in the same field. So the fact that I have a master's degree gives me a whole slew of points towards this. The other way I can still earn, earn points towards this certification is by going to view autopsies in Aitney. I just need to find three days away from work and life and stuff to go watch autopsies all day. And I don't think I probably wanna do those three days back to back.
Yeah.
So that's the piece of, yes, there's supposed to be this sort of continuing ed, but it's not required.
Good to have.
So they've like probably pretty busy down there all the time in autopsies.
They're really busy. Last summer, they were terribly backlog. Um, right now, just when you see on the news, like I live in Sat County, so, and I, I knew I had met Dave Schultz, so like some of that is like you go, oh, oh. Cause you know, a couple murders last week in Marshall Town, and it's like. I think it's like when you get a new car and then you start seeing that car everywhere. Now I'm more in tune to like. Oh, this happened. I feel bad for the person who investigated it, you know, like you're more aware, but they've been busy.
But I think it's a benefit to the county to have you.
Without doubt.
To speed on, on all you can educate yourself with. And like last year, I mean, you did get the grant and it didn't cost a taxpayer anything, but it's potentially.
He's took forever to get.
Forever. We just got him.
Really?
Yes. I'm not opposed to such a small amount to.
And it doesn't pay everything. I think, what was it? Food or it was something. Cause I think your costs were close to nine hundred.
I think my hotel cost was a little more than.
Was that what it was? I can't remember. There was some small chunk they didn't pay, but.
Or I was like, hey, can I, well, but when you, when you think about putting that class in Aitney and where we are, I'm sure my mileage was more than some.
Right.
You know?
And that might've been the small part. I can't remember which part. It was pretty minimal though.
If the grant doesn't go through, what fund would we pull out to cover the cost?
It comes out of fifty-one where the autopsies are paid from.
So I thought.
Who do we have in the county that you actually like, I, I could just say that some of that stuff bothers you. I mean, you're going to make sure you statementally.
Yeah, um, who do we have in the county that what?
For, for like counseling, you know, so that you don't inquire PTSD this.
Right. So that's an interesting thing that I learned in the November training that, or I was made aware of in the November training that I had Ida County fund. Um, was that this big push that like death investigators are first responders too? So a couple of these like have had for fire and EMS, they've had, um, critical incident stress debriefing. They don't invite me. They don't invite dispatch and that's not because they're excluding us. It's because there's not the education. And so with that in mind, not that piece per se, but I did a training that I created and did for free for EMS last month. For the county that anyone could come to for CEU that I invited you guys. Um, just to kind of be like, hey, these are the times you should be calling for this service as EMS. This is how you work with law enforcement. This is what I might ask you to do on scene. Keeping in mind that when we've got no second call ambulance all the time, I still wanna get you back in service. You know, but like if DCI says, no, please wait till we can interview you, then like you gotta stay on scene and wait for DCI and some of, some of that. So I did provide training to them and I'd kinda like to do the same thing with law. Um, because like I, and maybe Dr. Crabbe is going out. I don't have that information, but like.
I don't think he.
Your population is half in Dennison. I've never been called to Dennison. Like, so some of these numbers are concerning to me. The other numbers that are concerning to me is last year in the grant application, it asked how many people died in Crawford County in twenty twenty-two and how many were investigated? And so I got that information pieced together by calling funeral homes and talking to Terry and, um. It was more like a hundred and twenty people died maybe and, and we investigated twenty of them or something like that. This year I thought it was in the application and now I don't see it, so I asked Terry and she said last year there were six. Uh, death investigations noted. So in Ida County, we've been dispatched seven times in the last thirty days. And that's a county with what may be half.
Half of us.
And that part like. As a person who has a hard time looking at a system and not wanting it to be right, that part makes my stomach hurt like. Where did these people go or does law not know when to call for us or does EMS not know when to call for us? Um, so I called the state this morning and I was like, hey, in a county of say sixteen thousand, what should the numbers look like? And Mark Bethel said, Rachel, in that county, there should be about a hundred and sixty people a year who die. Okay, we're probably not too far off that. And he said, and thirty percent of those are ME calls. And that's what our handbook says too, is of the thirty-four thousand people who die every year in Iowa, that ten percent of those, or. Ten thousand of those meet the legal threshold for investigation. And so that's when I go, so we should have had forty-eight calls? And I got six, like, huh, that.
Makes you wonder.
Makes you wonder.
Things that make you go hmm.
Right, and I've had the luxury of working in Ida County as well. So I have this constant point of comparison for how are we dispatched? When are we dispatched? How is that communicated? How are we compensated? And, and so unfortunately, since I have this. These two running side by side, I have a constant comparison.
Cause thirty percent, this seems like a high number.
Thirty percent of. Out of hospital, well.
I mean, it just seems like, you know, most people when they, most people, I guess, when they die, they're either at a nursing home.
What are the requirements?
Hospice, they're in hospital.
Right, so.
Suspicious, unwedness.
Um, unidentified, so if we don't know who the person is, we'd better be going. Um, if it was non-natural. Out, um, but how do you know it's natural until you go?
Even in the nursing home.
Like if I can be crass, if, and I live in Sat County, so I won't hurt you guys, but. If I have a cancer history and I get murdered and EMS comes out and they're like, oh, she has a cancer history, let's just send her to the funeral home, like.
Right.
You know, and I'm a worrier, but I think about these things, like are we giving people what they deserve? Um, while of course trying to keep costs down too.
Yeah.
But those are some of the reasons where I feel like if I get continued training, I'm the person that can slowly chip away maybe at the systems piece of this and move us forward. Um, are we following the law? If it says legal threshold and there's code about it and our numbers are that far off, like. I would have questions. Um. Crawford's also unique in the way dispatch happens, so we get called by the hospital switchboard. In an unknown order. Based on maybe EMS calling or sometimes a paramedics just call Dr. Crabbe directly. Um, in Ida County, we use an app where they're paging us, there's seven of us there, so they page us all at once and then we click who can, who's available or who's not. Um, and then if no one responds to us three in the morning, maybe I ignore the app because I'm like, I don't want to. Um, then they start calling us on the phone in order of who they think is closest. The last one I did in Ida County, they asked for me by name. Um, because I, I, I think because I'm thorough.
Quincy, Dr. Quincy.
What do you think the total cost of the continuing ed would be? I mean, if.
For this?
For this.
Not to exceed a thousand dollars?
Right, right, nine fifty, whatever, yeah. For this one, yes.
Yeah.
Um, and hopefully we get the grant. But this bigger picture part, like at some point, I'd like you guys to have an understanding of the system and what.
Yeah.
It's looking, what it's supposed to look like, what it looks like in other counties. Um, I'm not making a request on compensation today, but for your future thinking. You guys are compensating at the lowest level in the state. Um, average MEI call is getting compensated three hundred dollars in this state. Um, Crawford's giving one hundred. Ida's at two hundred, but they'll probably July one bump it. Sat County's at two fifty when I last asked. I believe Cherokee's in the six hundred range plus on call pay. Um, so that is another piece of getting. Quality investigation or thorough investigation is like. And again, when it's great grandpa in bed, maybe it doesn't take that much time, but we still have a lot of paperwork after the fact. Um, but the ones I've done for Crawford, they took all day. They, you know, so.
I know we pay miles in addition to the rate. Are those the same way?
Ida County does not pay me mileage and that's the only one I can speak for, but then I can just write it off on my taxes because they're ten ninety-nine in me.
Okay, yeah.
I'll bring in the points of Dr. Crabbe and. That bring in the points of Dr. Krab and what you said, I mean.
Yeah, and I don't know where he's, where he's at with, he was on medical leave. I don't know if he's
Right. I think he might still be.
And the other
Kind of a process that we worked through here. You know, he's the director of that.
Right.
I mean, a valid point, it just
Yeah, it's just questions and it's not a criticism of him, but
What are you looking for? A motion here?
Yes, yes. I think law and EMS could use some education.
On the funding.
Yeah.
Just to cover the difference or all the up to a thousand.
What we're looking for in a motion? It would depend on if we, if the grant comes, of course, that would reimburse us, but
Yep.
we probably need to
Up to
Think about covering her expenses.
Yes. So we need a motion. Uh, that's the wishes of the board.
Do you need a dollar amount on the motion or just?
Up to. No?
No, she, uh, we've, I mean, we put it on the agenda requesting funds for training as the ME, MEI. So if you want to be more specific, you sure can, you can put an up to amount. Um, I don't know that you need to, I mean,
We have an idea where it's
Right. It's gonna be probably within a thousand dollars. And the check we got last, this, well, last year.
This week.
This year for last year was like eight hundred dollars. Yeah.
So that's what the grant is again, is eight hundred.
So up to you.
I will approve the funding request for the medical examiner investigator.
Okay, thank you, Craig.
Training. Second.
All right. Any further discussion? That'll call a vote. All favor eye.
Eye.
Any pose? Chair votes eye. All right, that's that approved.
Do I have your permission to type your name in the grant application where it says signature and it says you have to type your name?
That will be fine.
Okay. Do you want to do a wet signature here then? Or, okay.
Thank you.
Here. Okay, say yes later, then Terry won't have to find you.
You want me to sign right out of signature?
Sure. Yeah, I know.
I don't think this is a job that we all think about a lot.
I hope not.
Well, you know, but you know, I appreciate your dedication to this and, and how detailed you want to be able to be about. I mean, that's actually good. It's good to know that somebody's out there looking to make sure the truth is being that.
Yeah, and it's a service to families and that's the part I like. Um, it's not like really cool and fun.
No.
But it's a service to families and to the county and it's interesting work. And there's a time or two where it was like, okay, well, we did that and checked the boxes, but there's a time or two where I was like, like what I did made a difference and it made a difference, not because, like if you ask Jim Stein cooler, like, hey, has having Rachel there made a difference? He's gonna say yes. And it's not because I'm a genius, it's because I followed my training. My training is different than law or EMS, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Keep up the good work. All right. Um, next up agenda is discussion, take action on the resolution twenty twenty four thirteen approval of financial year uh, twenty twenty four twenty five budget certification taxes. So everybody's had a chance to look that all over.
We have our motion approved.
Yep. Need further discussion? I'll call a vote. I'll favor eye. Kyle? Craig?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Okay. Chair votes eye. Resolution has been approved.
Where is the board received mail? Is it twelve oh two Broadway?
Yeah. You can put um, sweet five if you want. That'll come to my office.
Um, my husband asked me to ask that, so he must have some surprises for
Okay. All right. So then our next item is also a resolution, uh, appointing Amy Sigibard Assistant Office Administrator in the Sheriff's Office as Civil Process Server. So we've all seen that in the packet.
Yes.
Questions on that? Any discussion? That'll call your vote.
With the resolution, we need a motion. I'll make the motion to appoint Amy as Assistant Office Administrator in the Sheriff's Office as Civil Process Server.
All righty.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on the resolution?
Who, who served in that role in the past?
That's a good question.
Um, Suzie does.
I can only say Suzie probably currently does.
I think it's just Suzie. Amy, do you know if it's anybody else? Is it just Suzie? And you now?
Have two of them.
She was up there.
She's up there.
Below the camera.
Yep, she's just there.
I don't know if she can answer.
She's muted.
I think it's her.
Suzie, I think you're right.
So we will
So we can have more than one, it's not
Is it Clundert too? Does he serve?
Okay.
You have no idea.
It's him too. I can't remember.
If he must be
What does a civil process server do?
Serve paper.
Paper, paper server.
Paper server. Can't have too many of those, I guess.
Probably gotta be able to do, they probably gotta be certified at that receives stuff at the desk and stuff, probably, I guess.
Call the question.
All right. Uh, we've got a motion in a second.
Aye.
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 All right. Chair votes eye. Uh, Amy is now a paper server. So thank you, Amy. All righty. Discussion, take action on troubleshooting estimate for jail, jail generator. Who knows anything about that? You know what was in there?
I can't remember. It was in there.
Yep, it was in there.
Yeah, they, um, the the estimate for that is nineteen fifty and twenty cents. So
Did it have?
So there's a, there's a low fuel indicator and it is three quarters full of fuel. So they need to troubleshoot that and um, the, the estimate includes parts, labor, um, and travel.
What's the company that's gonna do that?
It's Cummins.
Cummins.
Cummins, yep.
Yeah.
So we just need March to approve that though.
All right.
What was the amount again?
Nineteen fifty.
It's nineteen hundred.
Nineteen hundred dollars.
All righty.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Need for the discussion? Now I'll call the vote. I'll favor eye.
Aye.
Any pose, same sign. Chair votes eye. All right, they can troubleshoot the jail generator.
We just have one?
In the jail.
Yeah, in the jail, yeah.
All right. Next up, we have discussion, take action on opening an award that RFP bids for the Citizens Center Basement Area. That was in the packet. Did everybody have a chance to look that over?
There is one.
There's only one.
There's only one. Yep. That's all we've got turned in. So we'll look, if you'll hand that to me.
Yep.
So was that kind of in the area that you were expecting or was it
Well
Was what you were expecting?
Demolition, framing, drywall installation, cabinets, paint the walls, rubber base, ceiling tiles, interior doors, uh, insulation, trim insulation, materials, labor, does not include electricity and plumbing. Uh, the bid came in at eighty two thousand, six ninety four fifty two. Uh, it's valid for thirty days. Uh, seems like a lot of, uh, you know, the cabinets, the ceiling tiles, seems like a lot, but there's, there's a lot that needs to get done to get it.
Well, and I, you know, I have one question. That's, that's soundproofing some of them walls, right? All of them.
Yep. That's insulation. So so
Did she, so soon did it hit her?
Yes, it does.
It should have been
Sign the front of that changes.
Got a time on that, sorry.
That's all right. I didn't say anything on there this time. That's why I asked her.
There isn't a timeline of when he says he's in
For how long it would take.
Wow.
I know that they're
They're gonna get a plumber in there, so there's that.
Uh, Totten has been there. He did. He gave me a call the other day, uh, had just a few basic questions and just trying to figure out where he's gonna reroute that water. I was up tapping on the
Okay, good.
Brains upstairs, so he would make sure it was on the, the right ones. So, uh, yep, he's, yes.
Suzie was here this morning already and said he didn't finish everything. So like all the pipes and everything were still sticking out of the walls and didn't get cut off and
Did he change, did he reroute the water so that we can get started on IT down there?
It didn't sound like it based on what she said.
I knew.
So
Well, he wasn't getting started. Uh,
So just FYI, since I heard you talking about it.
Thank you very much. Uh, I, I think progress was made by getting him there and he had his helper with him and there were a lot of, they were
Right.
I think they've got it here now.
Electrician and the IT person is, they're trying to get there this week. So that needs to be accomplished.
You know, this is the only bid we've got. And to keep moving forward.
Yeah.
No.
We get a motion.
What was the dollar amount on that?
Eighty two thousand, six hundred ninety four and fifty two cents.
Yep.
All right.
Well, you know, like I said in the past, I'll make a motion to approve this. This is something that's costing us more money on a daily basis, not doing anything. We've been down this road for two years already.
Second. Good point.
It's just dealing with, I mean, every contractor out there just swamped.
Yep.
Encourage our young kids to become
We need to start working in grade school.
Yep.
You are correct, sir.
They won't be the new billionaires.
Your kids.
We have a motion in a second.
All right. Ready for their discussion? If not, I'll call a vote. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any pose? Chair votes eye. Uh, we'll notify them that they've won the bid, find out when they get started and get it going. So
Yeah, with all this rain, they might be looking for inside, but
All righty.
Who does know the Washington initial?
I can.
A you, yeah.
He did, I did want to make that point that this gentleman had reached out to me because he was concerned about timelines because he can't control the plumbers in there.
Right, right.
And I said, if you run into problems, just let us know. We'll work.
Did you
Should I, Suzie as the general manager over there to crack the whip? Let's go down that.
All right.
We're good. We're working on it.
There we go. Making progress today.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Hurry up and wait project. We're used to that, right?
Yes. Discussion, take action, appoint representative to the Iowa Government Healthcare Plan Board. Neil is currently doing that and what
Nobody is.
Nobody.
This is for our new, this is for IGHCP and their twenty eight E group. Um, so it says each group shall appoint one representative to the Iowa, Iowa Government Healthcare Plan Board, I, IGHCP.
And what exactly will they do? I'm confused.
I don't know.
So brand new board?
I think they go over and they meet and they probably go over the statistics of the numbers.
They've been in existence since they started.
Real time suckers on that board.
Since I got taken off of the mental health, I would volunteer.
Well, you'd do public health, so this would probably be a good board for you.
Well, I nominate Gene Hikes.
Second, huh?
All right.
Any further discussion?
Call the question right away.
All right. I'll favor eye.
Aye.
Aye.
That was the quickest motion. Motion. Second of the day.
I motion.
My pen, it's, it only can move as fast as it can move.
All right, so let them know.
Kyle and Craig.
Jump into it and see what it's all about and uh, I'll be glad to serve on that.
That's the one of the day.
Well, I heard she's the volunteer, so.
Well, I just, it makes sense.
Don't give them a chance to second guess it.
All right. Unless you want to do it.
Too late. You're the man. Or lady.
Discussion, take action, allow board chair and sign privately.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Ready for the discussion?
Very quick today.
Are you ready to write?
What is a prior credit letter? I mean, what is that?
It's in the, it's in the, within the thing.
It's just the formal
It's from them.
It's from me.
It's about our insurance.
I see.
Dave, did you second?
Yes, I did.
All right. Any further discussion other than uh, identifying exactly what it is? Sarah, let Craig read it. He said, so. Thank you. Do you want me to sign that?
You gotta stamp it first.
All right. No, I'm just taking sure that Craig's okay. Uh,
Call the question.
All right. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post and sign? Chair votes eye. All right. Thank you. Discussion, take action, resolution, uh, twenty twenty four to fifty, health insurance premiums planned for twenty twenty four slash twenty five. We've had that discussion. Everybody kind of
Did you see it? Everybody see it in the
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's in the thing. I think that explains all the, explains our medical premiums, what the two percent administrative fee for Cobra looks like for all of the things. Um,
And the, the, the county's cost, if I read that right, we're gonna be spending one point eight million on premiums? Is that right or not?
Um, yeah, probably.
Okay.
Well, we'll be, we'll be paying all of it. But the count, the employees portion goes in
Goes into that.
To that.
Goes in, back into that pot.
So one point eight is the total cost.
One point eight is what we currently pay.
Currently pay.
It'll be two point five.
I do think we did a very good job and I appreciate what Holmes, Murphy and Joe did last week as far as walking us through the numbers and the percentages, employee contributions and, and everything they did to get us to a very fair point that we could get, you know, as fair as we could be. So I guess with that, I'll make the motion to
Always hard.
Motion to approve the twenty four.
It's a resolution.
Need the motion in a second.
All right. Health insurance premium planned for twenty four, twenty five.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on this resolution? If not, we'll start with Craig.